Okay. The July 18, 2018 Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is now convened. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Platt?
Here.
Commissioner Gambetti?
Here.
Commissioner Myers-Kapuia?
Myers-Kapuia.
And that's an interesting mix, isn't it?
Yeah, they're my friend here, no worries, but we're both here.
How about Moreland-Kapuia? Thank you. Commissioner Myers? Okay.
I'll say.
Chair Cruz?
Here. Thank you. All right. Next, we have the Commissioner reports. Peter, would you like to start? Commissioner Platt?
Yes. Wednesday, June 20th, Board meeting with Hacienda CDC. So I'll have to report.
I have nothing to report, except that I'm really disappointed I missed the People's Market.
Yeah, so I actually had the opportunity to attend my People's Market and just want to thank everyone here at Prosper Portland. You all were awesome. Bobby Lee on Twitter, Tori working it on the stage, Lisa. I saw lots of folks there. So it was a wonderful event and it was nice to see all the vendors of color. And I actually spent quite a bit of money, too, just so that you should know. I contributed my part. And then I participated in the Hill Block Project Working Group on July 11.
Thank you. And I attended the My People's Market event on June 30. And on July 5, I attended a meeting regarding the Harbor of Hope project. And I think I had some other things, too, but I'll have to get them to Pam later. So, all right. Next, we have Kimberly's report.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners. I'd like to begin by recognizing that Chair Cruz and Commissioner Myers were just reappointed to another three-year term and to congratulate them for that and also thank them for their incredible volunteer service to our community and to the Board and to the agency. So thank you very much. We've had a really busy few weeks since our last meeting in June. The Urban Manufacturing Alliance released a new research report on June 18 called "The State of Urban Manufacturing: Portland City Snapshot." Manufacturing contributed $8.76 billion, with a B, in annual earnings to the Portland metropolitan area in 2015, nearly one in eight jobs has a manufacturing component in our region. And you can view the overall research findings by visiting prosperportland.us and search UMA. I'd like to thank Kevin Johnson and Pam Neal for their work with the industry over a number of years. We're looking forward to having Kevin present on the report in our Board meeting in September. And speaking of manufacturing, I want to call everyone's attention to a Q&amp;A profile on Tim Leatherman in the Portland Business Journal. He's been a leader in the athletic and outdoor industry and is celebrating 35 years as one of our signature companies here in Portland. So congratulations on that milestone. Along with Prosper Portland staffers who are on hand to discuss our projects, I attended the annual Good in the Hood Festival on June 23. Also, on June 23, I attended the Fifth Annual Taste of Parkros at Rossi Farms. I want to recognize the Parkros Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative Board, who's put on this signature event for the neighborhood, and Prosper Portland's Damian Crowder, who helped to make the event a success. On June 27, we commemorated both our first year as Prosper Portland and our 60th year as an agency at an all-staff meeting. We were delighted to mark this occasion in a commission room that has been repainted and now has art that reflects local artists, both murals done through Regional Arts and Culture Council and art that's been sponsored through the Regional Arts and Culture Council, as well as new art and pictures that will be going up across the agency in each of the rest of the building. So I want to recognize Intisar Abiotto, who is the photographer. Looking forward to seeing those pictures. And Amy Nagy, Lisa Norwood, and Teri Morgan here at Prosper Portland, who have helped to create a more inviting space for people to come in that really reflects our work. I also attended the second edition of My People's Market. It was incredible to see all of the vendors. I bought these earrings and spent way too much money as well. And I do want to recognize the people who were involved in this effort, particularly Tori and Bobby and Amanda Park, Yvonne Smoker, Kim Moreland, Lisa Norwood, Anne Mangan, and all of the people who came out to volunteer. We are already looking forward to our next event, next My People's Market, which will take place in November. So more information to come. We have not yet secured a location, so we are being creative and really excited about that partnership with Travel Portland. Had an opportunity to speak at Business for a Better Portland Summer Soiree on June, I'm sorry, July 10, and had an opportunity to thank them for their partnership on the city's budget process this year and the increase in allocation to Prosper Portland. I also spoke at the Construction Careers Pathway Project, or C2P2. Was joined by Commissioner Myers at this event on July 12, hosted by Metro. Prosper Portland is excited to support and participate in this effort with 16 regional government entities. We are collectively dedicated to collaborating and making sure that there are reliable career pathways across projects in which government is making investment, in which we're making public investments, to create career pathways for people of color and women in the construction trades. And last night, along with Mayor Ted Wheeler, I attended the 102nd and Pacific Avenue Open House at ERCO to discuss an exciting partnership with Generations, David Douglas, Warner Pacific, Mount Hood Community College, ERCO, and others that would develop a catalytic, multi-generational community by the Gateway Transit Center. I want to thank the Multicultural Collaborative, who helped to put together five focus groups in anticipation of this event, and they reported out at the event. And Susan Kuhn, Lisa Abouaf, Laura Alcenas, Anne Crispino-Taylor, Lisa Norwood, and Anne Mangan for putting on the successful event. I think we probably had 80 people, 60 to 80 people who were there, and a lot of excitement about the possibility. So looking forward, I want to flag a number of upcoming events and just will note that all of these events are, you can find more information on our website, which is prosperportland.us. Tomorrow evening, so that's Thursday, July 19, in partnership with ONAC and NEA, Prosper Portland and the Athletic and Outdoor Young Professional Group will host the Native Creatives event tomorrow. The event will highlight the modern Native American entrepreneur and how they honor their culture while creating innovative new products that defy native stereotypes. There will be a panel discussion and a marketplace, so bring your checkbooks. And the event will be held from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at WeWork Pioneer Place, location on the third-floor lobby. Also tomorrow, also from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., but at the New Song Community Center, there will be a joint meeting of the North Northeast Community Development Initiative and the North Northeast Housing Strategy Oversight Committee, where there will be a focused discussion on the possibility of increasing resources available through tax increment finance in North and Northeast. Next week, the Broadway Corridor team will host an open house event on Wednesday, July 25. The event will be a true open house, so people can come in. There will be interactive activities, so it's not official meeting. It's come in, provide your perspective on what would make for an inclusive space, an inclusive place for Portlanders at the Broadway Corridor. And the event will be held at New Song Community Center from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. Prosper Portland will join Portland Parks and Rec and Harper's Playground in celebrating the grand opening of Gateway Discovery Park, which is a long-awaited park on northeast Halsey and 106th Avenue. Prosper Portland was pleased to be able to invest $1.2 million of the $8.2 million total for the construction of this beautiful park, which will include a plaza, skate area, and an inclusive play area for all children. The Asian Health and Service Center grand opening ceremony will take place on Wednesday, August 8, starting at noon at 90th and Southeast Foster. So the place will hold the Asian Health and Service Center Office, Community and Clinic Services, and Event Space, and is one of four key developments within the Lenz Town Center that is really redefining that intersection and that neighborhood. And finally, Prosper Portland staff will be attending some of the many events that are happening around Portland and highlighting our work and getting input, in particular on Broadway Corridor, ODOT blocks, Gateway, Transit Center, and other projects about what people want to see from a place perspective and activity perspective. So some of these upcoming events include Sunday Parkway's Green Loop, which is happening this Sunday, July 22. Our staff will be right by the post office facility in downtown. We'll be at the Portland, I'm sorry, at the Vanport Jazz Festival on August 4, at Lenz Fair on August 5, at the Pan African Festival on August 11, at the Jade Night Market on August 18 and August 25, and at El Grito on September 15. So lots of events coming up, and again, you can look at all of these events on our website. So now on to staff transitions. It's my pleasure to introduce a new member of the lending and asset management team, Brooke Mentire, who comes to us from Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon, or MISO, where he originated and underwrote a variety of small business and real estate transactions. He was also, while at MISO, a business development specialist, providing technical assistance to small businesses related to project financing, marketing, and pricing. Prior to MISO, Brooke was an account manager at State Farm, where he established new business and individual accounts, providing risk management and financial service products. Brooke graduated from Lewis and Clark College with a degree in management economics and is currently an MBA candidate at Portland State University. So we are delighted to have you. Welcome, Brooke. And last but not least, I want to recognize that today is the last Board meeting for two really important and beloved family members within Prosper Portland. Eric Iverson, who's been General Counsel, and Allison Schweiger, who's had really a number of different roles during her 11 years here at Prosper Portland. So we'll have an opportunity to fully appreciate Eric's service here, and we'll invite the Board to that. But I just want to publicly recognize Eric's incredible service to the agency over the nine years that he's played here, or that he's been here. Probably the most visible example of his work will be the lasting impact of Broadway Corridor. He really led those negotiations and was instrumental in making sure that we secured that site. And I also want to recognize that he was instrumental in helping us to move forward the Hill Block project and the collaboration with Legacy. There's really nothing that has come to the Board, basically, over the last nine years that Eric hasn't touched in some way. He's cared deeply about the organization and our commitment to social equity. We're really excited about what he's going to do next, which is to take, he's retiring and will be going on to kind of political and other community service-oriented events, but we just will miss him enormously. So I want to appreciate his service, and I just can't thank him enough. So Allison Schweiger has also been a really important member of our team over the last 11 years. She has managed an array of tasks related to our financial sustainability work. She put together the New Market Tax Credit Allocation Proposal. She helped us to create the Portland Economic Investment Council. She's basically been the person who has corralled the proverbial cats in a million different ways over the last 11 years, and she does it with a fantastic sense of humor. She can manage more details and articulate things in just an incredibly clear way. She troubleshoots. I mean, we're so sorry that she's moving on, but she is moving to Atlanta with her family, and she will be closer to some of her in-laws. And so we wish her the very best in her next adventure and remind her that when her husband graduates from law school, that we will still be here, and we hope that she will come back. So please help me in thanking Allison. So thank you.
Thank you. I don't know what to add to that, other than just thanks very much to Allison and Eric for your great service on behalf of the Board. I think we just have really been lucky to have you. So thank you very much. All right. Next, we have meeting minutes for July 13, 2018. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We have no public comment today? Okay. All right. Next, we have two consent agenda items. Resolution Number 7278 regarding an IGA with the Portland Housing Bureau and Resolution 7279 authorizing a subrecipient contract with Work Systems, Inc. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those two resolutions? Assuming there's no discussion.
Still moved.
Do you have a second?
Second?
You ready for a second?
Yeah. Thank you. All right. No discussion, then? All those in favor? Aye? Okay. Excellent. Next, Item 8 is an action item, election of officers. And I think Commissioner Platt, I think, is going to handle that.
Yes, I'd like to formally nominate Gustavo Cruz as Chair, William Myers as Vice Chair, and Francesca Gambetti as Treasurer. And now, I guess, now's the time for a motion.
Are you moving?
I, yes. I guess I am, yes.
Okay, I'm seconding that.
And then, all those in favor? Aye.
Okay.
You vote for yourselves?
I think we do vote, actually. So, aye, unanimous.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Next is Item 9, an action item. This is adopting the 10-Year Prosper Portland Financial Sustainability Plan. And Tony Barnes and Justin Douglas will present on that. I think. I hope.
Thank you, gentlemen. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Branham. If you'll excuse me for one moment, we're having an IT issue here, so I'm going to be right back.
I'll just note that we are looking at upgrading our AV system, so this has been an issue, but we are working on it, so hopefully it won't continue to be a problem. Our apologies.
Okay. Tony will have to do this by the seat of her pants. We obviously have the screen on for you to witness. Chair Cruz, I'm Justin Douglas, Commissioners, Executive Director Branham. I would have worn a black suit all week in sadness about Eric and Allison's departure if it weren't 90 degrees, but I'll personally miss both of you. Thank you all for all that you do behind the scenes. It won't be the same without you. So Tony and I are here today to request that the Board adopt the Prosper Portland 10-Year Financial Sustainability Plan. Obviously, this is an item that we have presented to you on a number of occasions in the past, and this will be the first time that we're actually sharing it with you as an action item in hopes that you will approve it. So the structure of today's presentation is I'm going to spend a few minutes going through the process of how we got to where we are today, why we have a financial sustainability plan, and what it means to the agency. Tony, then, will go through kind of the four main components of the financial sustainability plan and what has changed over the last year in particular. We will talk about some next steps, and then we'll just entertain any conversations or questions that you might have. Okay. It was almost three years ago that the Prosper Portland Board directed staff to engage or to begin a process of addressing the agency's long-term financial sustainability needs. So, beginning in the fall of 2015, staff, and that was largely led by Tony Barnes, worked with a financial sustainability committee and a consultant team to kind of unpack where we are as an agency and how we might rethink our future approaches to funding the agency and its work. So the team scrutinized our business practices. They did a lot of research into what other peer organizations are doing. And what they did was they came back with a series of kind of relatively achievable but high-impact actions. Those we brought to the Board in June of 2016. So at that meeting, the Board adopted a new financial investment policy. And basically, what the Board did at that time of amending the financial investment policy, you see a lot of that in the Financial Sustainability Plan today. So balancing long-term financial return considerations with our mission-driven investments, balancing our grant and infrastructure investments, seeking external resources, and then a kind of a host of internal business practices. So that was approved in 2016. Since then, the work really began in full tilt. So Tony and his team worked on creating the global grants and infrastructure budget, which capped the amount of resources that we put into those investments. We created a community development entity. This is the organization which applies for federal new market tax credits. We scrutinized some of our operational administrative budgets to make sure that we could kind of trim those down so that they were more appropriate. Tony spent a lot of time working on refining business models. And then another thing that we did that wasn't really included in the investment policy, but that is, but it was still a sizable portion of work, and we talked about it with you in the past. And that has been a transition of talking about the agency work from outputs into outcomes. So for many, many years, we talked about our work and the number of loans that we got out the door, the number of projects that we funded. But there really is a human aspect to our work that we've neglected to tell over the years. And it wasn't until we got into the Financial Sustainability Plan and owing to some of the guidance that you all presented about ensuring that we think about people and businesses, that's really something that's changed as well. More recently, on January 13 of this year, we presented the 90% draft Financial Sustainability Plan to Portland City Council. Now, while City Council didn't take any formal action, I think they were appreciative of our work, and I think, if anything, we also learned that we probably need to do a better job of going back more frequently, not only to talk about the agency's financial picture, but also just to share with them the work that we're doing. We do a lot of different things at the agency, and even some of the members of our own City Council, I think, need a refresher from time to time to remember the type of work that we do. And there've been a number of other accomplishments over the last six months to deliver on the plan objectives. Tony will go into some details further on in the presentation. So just to put it in context, the Financial Sustainability Plan is put very simply, it's basically the mechanism by which we fund our strategic plan. But I also would like to point out that we consider it a living document or something. I know that's a little bit of a cliche, but we do feel that it's something that can and should change. Real estate market changes, federal funding dynamics change. There are other unforeseen consequences from our work or things that we don't have control over that affect our work. So we feel that the Financial Sustainability Plan should evolve and change over time, and we fully expect to come back to you with course corrections or changes or additions if necessary. So I mentioned the outcomes work, and what I'm going to share with you is what we call a theory of change. And I just don't recall if we shared this with you in the past or if you've seen an animated version, so. But again, we're an agency that, on the one hand, can invest in parks. On one day, the next day, we make a commitment to our entrepreneurs who are people of color or women with resources in the Inclusive Startup Fund, or then purchase the post office site. Those are vastly different activities, and yet we really do believe that collectively, that in investing in those activities, that they do deliver on the agency's strategic plan and high-level objectives. So if our objective is to build an equitable economy, we do that basically through three, at a high level, three different types of work. Business development and technical assistance, community capacity and workforce training, and then commercial and mixed-use investments. But we can only deliver on those things if we have the resources to put towards them. If and when we do have those resources, by addressing those activities, we deliver on the agency's four external objectives. Access to high-quality employment, 21st century networks and partnerships, equitable wealth creation, healthy neighborhoods, and of course, by finding additional resources, we deliver on our internal metric of effective stewardship to fund our work. And we believe that by doing this, we can deliver on prosperity for Portlanders. So that's the strategic plan context and how the Financial Sustainability Plan fits in. Another way to think about it is that the Financial Sustainability Plan, as I mentioned, it was kind of a fluid document. It is contemplated in these three pieces, kind of the investments that we make, the resources that we have to do that, and what are the outcomes. And those are all intricately related and change over time. So I'm going to turn it over to Tony. Tony's going to talk about the four components of the business model and the plan itself.
All right. Thanks, Justin. Going into the details of the plan. We really have, as we mentioned, four components. Number one, optimizing the remaining resource, TIF, and property assets held by Prosper Portland. Number two, securing additional public funding, often in context of, in the past at least, the Boomerang Fund, but we have some other components in the model. And then also, number three, partnering on real estate development, and also seeking, finally, four, new revenue for both capital and operating purposes. So not just balancing out our operations and operating budget over time, but what we use to replace TIF for capital resources in the long term. So going into the details a bit, starting out with the first component, optimizing remaining resources. It's really the first and most critical component of the model. As we've previously reviewed, it falls into three basic categories. Grants and infrastructure, where we meet all policy goals, and high levels of public benefit with no expectation of repayment or financial return. Program-related investments, as shown in, as the blue portion of the donut there, where we meet all policy goals and high-level public benefit, but there's a small return, financial return included, for 2.5% on average over time. And then finally, as illustrated by the, I think it's the gold or yellow portion of the donut, mission-related investments, which meet all policy goals and anticipated repayment, financial return of closer to 6% or of a market return. So here, this is a picture of the five-year URA resources, how it's divided up between the three categories. $350 million in remaining URA resources not related to the housing set aside. Roughly half are included as program-related investments, with the balance being split between grants and infrastructure and mission-related investments, which have the higher returns. As we've demonstrated in prior presentations, how this is allocated across the different urban rural areas is a bit different. Neighborhood URAs are primarily program-related investments, as illustrated by the blue shade of the donuts, with additional grant and infrastructure investments shown in green. Most central-city URAs, like River District, Downtown Waterfront, Orkin Convention Center, have programmed higher amounts of mission-related investment, but also program-related investments and some limited grants and infrastructure as well. So it's really looking at the different areas and the different remaining TIF dollars, how those dollars are programmed to reach targeted levels of investment. The second piece of optimizing remaining resources, as I mentioned, is the real estate portfolio currently held by Prosper Portland. While return targets are meant to be flexible within the plan, like remaining TIF budgets, properties have been classified in the model itself. For example, most mission-related investments, as shown on the map here, are within the central city, and with the exception of a couple in Lenz and Airport Way, all the other properties are tied to more of a program-related return, as illustrated by the blue dots. So mission-related investment properties right now in the model include the U.S. Post Office property, Block R, just down the street here, ODOT blocks in the Central East Side, Cascade Station and Airport Way, 92nd and Herald in Lenz. So the model's meant to be flexible. However, right now in the model, that's how it's programmed. However, right now in the model, that's how it's programmed. Changes to programming of these assets to a lower return target, like budget investments, may require changes elsewhere in the portfolio in order to reach targets long-term in the model that we've established. So on the optimization of remaining resources, the return on investment is really the most, as I mentioned, the most critical component. It's about three-quarters of the URA budgets are programmed with mission-related investments and PR program-related investment return. It really is the single most important piece. The 6% MRI return combined with the 2.5% program-related investment will generate over $12 million per year in the model towards the operating budget. This is on a present value basis. By 2031, this will make up about half of the status quo operating budget. It'll be greater than all the other resources from public funding, and again, making return on investment really the single most important component of the plan and the operating budget. So as illustrated in this graph here, if projects average closer to 2.5% instead of 6%, contribution towards the operating budget will fall to about $6 million a year, about half of what's in the model. So significantly reducing the operating model going forward in the long term. The second component of the model, secure additional public funding, is, sorry, additional public funding to support economic and community and development programs, and the focus has been on Boomerang resources. So as URAs expire, outstanding debt is repaid. The tax increment generated from the overlapping taxing jurisdictions, tax rates are returned to each district. So based on the City of Portland's tax rate, we estimate about $312 million will be returned to the City of Portland, starting in 2021, going through 2032. After discounting based on potential property tax limits, like Measure V compression, discounts and delinquencies related to property tax payments, and also reserving some funds for repayment of the River District Line of Credit, which right now is programmed to be paid off using proceeds from the U.S. Post Office site. With that reserve built in as a backstop, the total resources to the city are estimated at about $278 million. So this is about, this is through 2032. And within the model, we have about 18% of that amount right now coming back to Prosper Portland as the source of new public resources. This is about $7.5 million by 2031, about $51 million in total through the time period of the model, or $32 million on a present value basis. While not as significant as the optimizing current resources, available resources, it's still about almost 20% of resources in the long-term model. So it's a very significant component. It has changed slightly over time. When we first started talking about the model, this was a couple of years ago. A lot can change in a couple of years, especially around property tax forecasts. With higher growth in some districts than originally anticipated a couple of years ago, we've been able to move up the defeasance date in several districts, so the bonds can be paid off, anticipated to be paid off sooner. Therefore, taxes being released back to the taxing jurisdictions sooner, and general fund, City General Fund being one of those beneficiaries. And therefore, this model has improved in total. And we used to talk about about a 25% total of the Boomerang being part of the model. We basically held that amount of dollars in the model constant and decreasing the percent. So it's now about 18% of the Boomerang that's anticipated over that time period. There's other public resources identified in the plan. They're not specifically modeled, but they can serve as a means of helping reach the overall new public resource targets in the model. Include implementing property fit, regionally significant industrial sites in partnership with Business Oregon, and what's been most recently demonstrated, requesting new general fund allocations through the annual budget process. So staff are actively moving forward with these opportunities, as we've illustrated. With the budget process, there's been about $1 million in ongoing and one-time resources that have been added for fiscal year 1819. Also, fees from new market tax credit programs could provide an important operating revenue in the model. It's currently modeled by 2031 of about $1 million per year in fees, if we're successful in reaching allocations of about $60 million every couple of years through the late 2020s. Success in implementing these and other programs can help achieve, as I mentioned, the overall model and kind of supplement Boomerang resources or be a component of the new public resources. The third component of the business model is leveraging development expertise. As with other public resources, staff are actively implementing this component of the model, as illustrated by moving forward with our partnership with the city on 10th and Yam Hill for affordable commercial space for small businesses, as well as the recent approval of affordable commercial space, or I'm sorry, the mixed-use zone commercial affordability bonus program. So actively moving forward on several elements of this component. And finally, other new resources. The model and the plan includes seeking additional revenues for both capital and operating budgets. This includes pursuing additional fee-for-service opportunities, membership contributions from partnerships to help underwrite the cost of collaborative programs and pursuing new TIF districts in a very strategic manner. So when we look at existing remaining resources paired with new market tax credit allocations, and the potential from new TIF districts, as you can see from the graphic here, capital resources are not going to be at the same level in this model as they have been in the recent history and in the near history and in the next few years. However, it can provide a very significant targeted component for capital if we're successful in those different components. So all put together, the model components of the business model could help Prosper Portland return in the late 2020s to what we are currently experiencing as far as about a $30 million per year operating budget. That's for funding staff, economic development staff, development investment staff, as well as our grant and economic development programs that are currently funded through a combination of citywide resources, current resources like general fund, like enterprise zone resources, but also from existing TIF districts that fund PIP grant programs and the staff to support those programs. In this Scenario A example, this is our best-case model that we modeled, includes close to $30 million per year in the late 2020s for operating resources. This is on a present value basis, so actual nominal dollars are higher by 2031, but it's pretty close to what we currently have budgeted. The model yields outcomes in job creation, outside leverage funding and volunteer hours, workforce participants, and support for businesses of color, coming close to what would be expected with an ongoing $30 million present value budget based on, like I said, our current budget, but also related outcomes to those current budgets. So as we've illustrated in the past, we've created a model that looks at current accomplishments, current outcomes, the dollars and the inputs to those, and basically extrapolated that over time to show what could be potentially an outcome as related to these model dollars. However, if the new resources, estimated the new business model are not created, Prosper Portland's operating budget is roughly cut in half as purchasing power on current public resources. That's the current general fund, community development block grant funds from the federal government, as well as enterprise zone resources. Those dollars are eroded, and operating resources from current TIF districts are used or expire. So as the operating budget shrinks, the result of that is staffing levels potentially shrink, and as a result, projected outcomes from the operating budget would be expected to cut in half as well without the new resources. So risks to the business model. Scenario B, which I just illustrated, shows what would potentially happen with certain risks to new resources. However, there are also risks to the diminishing current resources in the model, including economic or policy changes impacting the City General Fund, community development block grant, and enterprise programs. So certain legislation, certain economic shifts could impact that base resource that is still included in the model. And then as well, to the new resources, internal risks include failure to reach certain lending targets in the model, unsuccessful in structuring funding projects to yield certain returns, as discussed around the 6% to 2.5%. Competition for return property tax resources as defeasance occurs with the TIF districts, and failure to secure or place a new market tax credit allocations as modeled. External risks include the larger changes to the Oregon property tax system, of course, a major recession and elimination of the new market tax credit program, which would be a detriment to the model. Going to hand it over to Justin.
Thanks, Tony. So as Tony highlighted, there's been a lot of work done in the last six months, but there's plenty more to do. I would just like to point out that Attachment A to the report in your packet includes an implementation timeline, and that shows the actions that are embedded within the Financial Sustainability Plan, which of those we have completed to date, which of those we expect to address this year, and those that are ongoing. Suffice it to say, it is a lot of work, but we will continue to look for opportunities to control costs, to reshape our investment programs, policies, and procedures, to streamline standards for loan activity, to update, continue to update the agency's financial investment policy, and then pursue, secure, and deliver on new capital and operating funds. In closing, I guess I'd like to say that we are, we're pleased to be here before you today. We thank you for your guidance over the last year-plus. I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the many folks within the agency who have put in a lot of time and work on this over the years. So Kimberly, for your guidance and support, to Faye Brown, to Lisa Abouaf, Kira Strausman, Amy Edwards, Robert Smith, Michael Gerton, Myra Areola, Lisa Norwood, and then, most importantly, to Tony. Tony is just a dynamo, and it's not a coincidence that he covered a lot of the technical items here today, and I'm doing the intro and the closing. He is an inspiration in the work that he does, and we wouldn't be here without his technical support and his calm demeanor. So Tony, I just personally want to thank you.
Thank you.
For that. And with that, we are happy to engage with you in conversation or handle any questions.
All right. Do you have questions? Commissioner.
Do you have any, I know it's a guessing game, but if you could assess a percentage likelihood, excuse me, of Scenario A versus B?
Commissioner, I think, when we looked at, I think in prior versions of this, we had several different scenarios included, which looked at different components, what would happen. I think there's different elements that it's an incremental look. I'm not going to assess a percentage likelihood of success, but I think every year and every effort that we take is building towards that. So it's really a kind of an iterative process and a week-to-week, month-to-month. So we're...
Commissioner, I think we've also realized since we began this process, I think we've come to realize how much of this actually is within our control. The first item is to optimize remaining resources. We still have significant TIF resources, and if we're strategic and smart about how we invest those, we can get a long-term return that addresses a lot of things that are not within our control, things like the new market tax credits or even the Boomerang Fund allocation. So I think that's a positive, that we now realize that this is not, we're not helpless here. And through the guidance of the board and staff keeping these things in mind, then we're probably a lot closer to A than we thought in the past.
So the Boomerang funds are a key component of your four-pronged, of our four-pronged strategy. And the model looks like we would be expecting that resource just kick in about five years, correct?
That's correct.
So am I reading this correctly, then, that we're looking for a commitment from City Council in the 1819 year for that five-year projection? Or what's the, what's that process look like, and when is that kind of major milestone decision expected to come?
So I think we will, we, this is an item that we talk about with City Council, I meet with them on a monthly basis. And so I think, you know, I take as a positive indication the increase in City General Funds this year. And my overall impression is that, or my sense of how this will occur, is that City Council will be invested in particular programs and in supporting those programs themselves versus earmarking on an ongoing basis a particular portion of the City General Fund resources. Now, I think that's still an ongoing conversation, and Mayor Wheeler has indicated his support for an ongoing earmark as we come closer, particularly assuming that it doesn't have an adverse impact to Build Portland, which is an earmark for some of those resources for infrastructure needs. So, you know, I think on that, we've thought about the idea of coming forward with a resolution in 1819. I think we want to have conversations with City Council about whether that feels like the right strategy and the right time, or whether we want to wait until we're closer. There are some factors that I think are impacting the city's general fund budget right now that we might want to be cognizant of. So I don't think, I'm not anticipating that we will have 100% clarity either way, one way or the other, in 1819. I just think it'll become more clear as we get closer to the defeasance date in 2021 and 2223.
More questions?
One additional, it's more of a, it's a general question, but, you know, there's bound to be some tensions, right, between maximizing returns as an enlightened landlord, right, with the appropriate sort of concessions to tenants who need our help. So I'm wondering, again, I assume there's a lot of discussion around that on an ongoing basis, but have we come across any real apparent tensions between balancing those two concerns in the work to date?
Well, I think, looking very narrowly at an example, the Affordable Commercial Tenancy Program is work that we do that might include sunk costs that we would otherwise be unable to recoup over the long term if we were to, say, lease property that Prosper Portland controls to a business that's paying market rate. But I think that those, in those types of cases, the strategic objectives outweigh the financial return. So whether or not they're in conflict, I'm not sure. I think we look at it kind of a more of a holistic picture and ensure that as long as we're kind of still pointing towards the North Star and still feel that we still can meet our targets, we're willing to take a loss on some of those initiatives.
My sense is, though, that Prosper Portland is far more, far more aware of these trade-offs now and is balancing them consciously and intentionally as we go along, which is in furtherance of our plan, which is really what we have to do, right? I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to make a balance. We're not going to be able to achieve a market return on everything we do, obviously. So it's really the shift in thinking and the shift in culture, and it seems like we're getting there. I mean, my impression from what I see is that our culture has changed pretty dramatically from the way we looked at investments five years ago, for example.
Yeah, and I would also point to, a couple of months ago, the staff brought the ODOT blocks developer solicitation, and that was a kind of a brand-new way of offering property to the development community in that we both, that we were able to identify a partner that not able, was able to identify a deal that, or a structure that could provide long-term revenue to the agency, but was also committed to maintaining industrial affordability and even five-year rents-free space to local partners. So maybe in the past, we might have thought of those as mutually exclusive, or that you squeeze one end and it's, you know, that, well, I won't go into that metaphor of it. But I think we, we're getting smarter about that. And we even have an action on the agenda later today, in the Cascade Station action, which is a lot different than we would have done these in the past because we're explicitly looking at how we can... done these in the past, because we're explicitly looking at how we can meet public goals, but also generate some return.
Great.
Chair Cruz, if I might, I want to also appreciate Justin's leadership on this. So, thank you, Justin, for helping steward this process throughout. And I think one of the things that we would really appreciate if the board supports adoption of the Financial Sustainability Plan is your continued kind of asking and probing as it comes before the board, what category things fall into. So, we're trying at the front end to have clear conversations with staff and partners about which category it falls into, and to have that discipline. It's a fairly complicated concept for our community engagement processes, so we need to do some thinking about how to differentiate between mission-related investment and program-related investment. But I think we want to be really transparent with you as decision-makers about what level of financial return we're hoping to achieve, and what level of public benefits, and whether we're getting that right. And so, I think we're looking for partnership on that as we really try to get that balance right, because there definitely will be trade-offs.
Well, thanks very much for all your great work on this. You know, we've come a long way over the last two or three years. It's pretty impressive. So, thanks very much. And would someone like to make a motion to approve the 10-year Prosper Portland Financial Sustainability Plan?
I move to approve the plan.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. Great.
Great job. Thank you.
Okay. So, next we have Item 10. This is an action item authorizing amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Bureau of Revenue and Financial Services Procurement Services in an amount not to exceed $799,100 for Business and Workforce Equity Contract Compliance Services. That's a mouthful. John Cardenas and Michael Gerton will present.
Commissioner Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Brannan. My name is John Cardenas, and Justin's going to be pulling up the presentation. We usually rely on this gizmo here, but yeah, you should see this slide, it looks crazy. What we're going to do today is we're going to take you through sort of a speed course on our Business and Workforce Equity Policy. And I also, I want to touch on a few different things, and so, one, oh yeah, here we go. So, what we're going to touch on is the, basically, the outline for our Business and Workforce Equity Policy, how it aligns to our strategic plan as an agency, the program that we're using, and the rigor and the responsibilities of each one of the people that are involved in this new program that we're implementing, and the impacts of that. And that's going to be significant, and I want you to pay particular attention to the impacts when we get to that point. And then, of course, we'll close with next steps. On the next slide here, we're going to start with the Business Equity Program. As you can see, if you look at this particular slide, you'll see a lot of different dollar amounts on there. Each one of those dollar amounts represents a trigger, if you will, and what to begin or to start our, the Business Equity Program. So, we'll just recap them here, I'm sure you can read them. Projects that we own that cost over $200,000, projects that receive sponsorship from us in cash that exceed $300,000 with anticipated construction costs of above $200,000, any land sales made by us that exceed $300,000 with expected construction costs of $200,000. And our aspirational goal is 20% of our construction costs awarded to certified minority-owned firms. And so, that word aspirational, it gets me every time, and so, we'll just leave that there. I'll just leave that right there. Next slide is our Workforce Equity Program. It's the same sort of thing. We have a ton of different dollar amounts that trigger the program to basically take effect. I could read them, but you can too. The whole point, I guess, here is to say that we have mandated these things, and these things are one of the items that is actionable. We could issue liquidated damages for those folks that aren't meeting the goals, and this is something that we've really taken very, very seriously as of late, and we're moving forward. And the partnership that we have with the city of Portland, particularly with OMF, which is the IG that you guys are going to be deciding on later, brings us all of the data that we need to really follow up on these things in very, very specific ways, and I'll get to that in just a second. What you see here, and you can't really see on there, but between jobs and the word prosperity, there's a word, it's neighborhoods, it's, so it's healthy jobs, these are our four main priorities, healthy jobs, or quality jobs, healthy neighborhoods, prosperity for all Portlanders, and partnerships. The partnerships part of it is key to all of this. And at this time, I'd like to acknowledge my colleague Wendy Wilcox, who is here, or was here, she's here. She, like myself, has a complicated title. She is in charge of Business and Workforce Equity Compliance and Green Building Policies. I also want to thank and recognize A. Sechow, who is a gentleman at the city who actually collects all of the individual data from each one of our projects, and his supervisor, who works through Kathleen Masié at the Bureau of Revenue and Financial Services. I also want to recognize our partners in the community, MCIP, that is the Metropolitan Contractors Improvement Partnership, and NAMCO, which is National Association of Minority Contractors of Oregon. What we're going to talk about today is really big numbers, lots and lots of dollars that are going out of this building and into projects that, to date, are about $350 million. But to be clear, those $350 million in projects aren't ours alone, we have parts of sponsorship and money in those. But nonetheless, our policies are very impactful, and they are, the way that we support small businesses, particularly people of color and women-owned businesses. So, this slide, don't be freaked out just yet. The slide looks a little complicated, but what you're looking at, if you were to spend just a little bit of time on this particular slide, what you'll see and recognize here is that this is the workflow, this is the deal structure and the flow as we move through a construction project, from the very, very opening, from the project initiation, all the way through closeout. What this slide also represents are opportunities and moments that we, as compliance folks, can interject and step in when we see issues starting to arise, as in workforce hours not being met, a lack of participation in ways that we can see the trend is headed down a negative path. We can step in at a moment's notice and offer some opportunity to help, to point them in the right direction, to bring people in, to shore up these issues. And these next two slides, these are two new pieces of software that we're using. LCP Tracker is the first new piece of software that we're using. And both of these pieces of software have taken us quite a while to get up to speed on, they're very complicated, and, but they are incredibly useful. The first one, LCP Tracker here, isn't, it tracks workforce compliance in all of the hours we have in all of our projects, and that's critical. That's key to understanding where the shortfalls are and where the wins are. But more importantly, with this one and the next one, this is called B to G Now, this one tracks our business compliance and the businesses, the minority-owned businesses that are on each one of our sites. These two pieces of software are critical because both of them allow us a speed to information that we didn't have before. Now, we're able to interject a lot quicker and to offer assistance and hold up our end of the bargain as a community partner, to helping some of the general contractors and subcontractors get their work done. When we see that there's a shortfall, we can step in quicker now than we've ever been able to before. And this is what I'm really excited about. This is our, these are our public numbers. This is on our website, and if you go to the Social Equity page on our site, you'll see all of these numbers printed. All of these numbers are updated and published on a monthly basis, and it details each one of our projects, where we're winning, where we're not doing so well. And this is, as far as we can tell, we are one of the only cities in the country making these numbers public and publishing them this way. And this is important, because we now have general contractors and other developers who are calling us, asking us, when are we going to update the numbers? We'd like to see the new numbers. And we have other folks calling us, asking us about partners that they see here that aren't performing so well, and saying, hey, what did they do? How come they didn't perform so well? So, they're using this as one more data point to shop around. When they're trying to build their teams, they want to know who's doing well and who's not. And these numbers are also the beginning, the origin of these numbers come from the job sites, go to A. Sechow, they come into Prosper Portland, go to Wendy Wilcox, and to Michael Gerton here, and he's going to go through another section here. And then, that's what we present on screen. This level of transparency, I think, is something that we should be super proud of. And again, back to partnerships. None of this stuff is possible without quality partnerships. The logos that you see here represent just a few of the people that we work with. I'm very proud to say that we have strong relationships with each one of these organizations, and those relationships are getting stronger every day. It's through these organizations that we can actually reach the business owners and the workforce to hear what they need, and to hear the services that we're providing, if they're effective or not. Each one of these organizations, they offer very specific tools, technical assistance, and a variety of other services that are specific either culturally or through a very specific scope that cannot be replaced. And so, I mean, these are, like I said, these are just a few of the many that we work with, but we're very proud to work with each and every one of these. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Michael Gerton, he's going to take you through lots and lots of numbers.
Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Brannan. My name is Michael Gerton, and I am a Research and Policy Analyst at Prosper Portland. I've worked here for six years, this is my first time presenting to the board. It's also the first time I've ever seen John in a suit. When I started working with, with a suit jacket, when I first started working with our construction and performance data several years ago, we were performing around 20%, right at our aspirational goal. Right now, after the compliance program that John put together with our colleagues at the city, we're at 25% for the 14 projects that we've completed over the last four years. That 5% change is not just a number up on a PowerPoint, it's not just a number that's in our board presentations. That's several million dollars that is now going to certified subcontractors that wasn't going to them previously. If we were to do a back-of-the-hand kind of, back-of-the-envelope calculation, we usually have around $200 million on average under construction at one time. Each percentage point is around $2 million, five percentage points, that's $10 million, that's now going to certified subcontractors. Because of the partnership that we've put together, the compliance program that we have in place, it's really, it has a huge impact on the work that we do. For projects that are currently under construction, we're at a 20% our aspirational goal right now, and these projects are under construction, and as it's been our experience, as the project progresses, the numbers improve over time. So, we're pretty confident that that number will meet the 25% that we've been historically The data that we get from the city is not just on how we're kind of top-line performing on our projects, they go really deep and give us a lot of information, and they also give us information that's disaggregated by race. I put together an analysis at the end of last year, end of 2017, that looked at our three-years' performance on our projects. These projects are performing at that 25% DMWSB rate that I spoke to you about. 11% comes from women-owned businesses, 8% from minority-owned businesses, and 3% from emerging small businesses and disadvantaged businesses. I'm going to go even deeper into this data. I want everyone to kind of keep their eye on the orange to purple pieces of the pie, that's the 25% that's going to the certified subcontractors. This slide delves into that, that was $81 million over the last three years that goes to certified subcontractors, and breaks it out by race. 55% of that certified subcontractor spend goes to white-owned firms. Another way to say it is 55 cents on every dollar that we spend on certified subcontractors goes to white-owned firms. When I first started delving into that, this data, that really shocked me. That's really surprising. I naively thought that certified subcontractors means it's going to people of color. That is not the reality, and that is a number that we are going to continue to work on to increase that piece of the pie that's going to certified subcontractors of color.
So, they're women or emerging small businesses, right?
Yes. Yeah, or even a DBE can be white-owned as well. Moving to the workforce side, for completed projects over the last four years, 80% of our projects on aggregate have met the apprentice requirement. The apprentice requirement is that 20% of each trade that is apprentice-able is being served by apprentices. 50% of our projects have met the minority goal. Our minority goal is 30% of total hours of a project goes to minorities, and 20% of our projects have met the female goal of 15%. In regards to the female participation, our goal, our aspiration goal is at 15%. The U.S. Census for the Portland metro region has the female participation in the construction workforce at 8%. Our goal is high. If you were to judge our programs or our projects through the prism of 8%, the majority of our projects are hitting that number. And you can, of course, do that at our website, where we have all of our data listed out for each project. For projects that are currently under construction, and as I mentioned before, these numbers will always change, and they usually trend to the upward, 88% of our projects are meeting that apprentice requirement, 44% are meeting the minority goal, and 11% are meeting the female goal. You know, even though the numbers will rise, there is, you know, the numbers are revealing an issue related to pipeline development of the construction labor workforce that has become more severe as the market has tightened as well. Lastly, is kind of a deep dive into the ethnicity, or the composition by ethnicity, of the Portland-Vancouver metro workforce, that's in gray, in comparison to the workforce by ethnicity of our projects. And I think a high-level kind of revelation in this slide is that our policies around workforce have ensured greater participation by minorities than structurally exists at large in the Portland-Vancouver workforce. And for our last slide, I'll pass the mic back to John.
So, as you can tell, we have a long way to go, but I'm really proud of where we are currently. Where we are represents all the effort that you put into it, and I tell people this kind of a lot, that contractors and general contractors out there, they all want to do the right thing. They do, they really do. They just don't know how to do it. Some of them know better than others, but with our assistance, they will rise to the occasion. I also really believe that partnerships above and beyond everything else are absolutely key. And so, next steps for us are most certainly going to be to maintain the partnerships that we have with the people in the community, in the construction industry, and related services and trades. Be present, be there, show up when you say you're going to show up, that's critical. Some of the other things that we're doing that aren't exactly a revelation, but are critical at this point, and the first thing is to update our social equity procedures and programs and specifications. And that's critical, because we wanted to have a little bit more parity with the city, we want to, we want to remove any confusion about our policy versus the city policy and who prevails over whom, and the difference in language, and the difference in vocabulary and the glossary that we're using to describe any of our programs, it's confusing. It's confusing to a lot of the folks in the subcontracting world, so much so that a lot of them don't even want to participate. And that's not right. There's a majority, as you can see, there's a majority of the construction projects that we have, we could use higher participation numbers. So, updating our procedures and specifications is key to that. And one of the other things is the Construction Careers Pathway Program, and Director Brannan referred to that earlier, we affectionately call it C2P2, and that is another way that we can address workforce issues as a region. It's 16 different partners, everyone in regular government that you've known and seen, but other folks that are involved in infrastructure development and real estate development significantly. It's OHSU, it's PSU, of course, Trimat and everyone else, and we're all having the same exact issue. We're addressing this pipeline issue. The pipeline issue is serious in our city, and we haven't really taken a regional approach and looked at it as a collective to figure out how we can address that issue in the future, and make sure that there is a clear pathway to these construction-related careers. And the other thing that I'm excited about, that, I'm sorry, Commissioner Myers isn't here, but it's an initiative that he has spearheaded that's actually gained a lot of traction. lot of traction. That's the Preapprentice Child, the Preapprentice Childcare Initiative. And what we know so far is that we know that the female participation in the construction trades are low. And he is very fond of saying that although we're reaching about 6% participation in our, in the construction trades, and we pat ourselves all day on the, on the back all day for that, he says the last time he checked, the census says that the population in Portland area is 51% female. Why isn't that number closer to that? And part of the reason is that he's, he's explored, and he's found from other partners like Oregon Tradeswomen, is that childcare is an issue, not just for women, but for single parents across the board. But by and large, as we know, childcare falls onto the responsibility onto women. So if we had a childcare initiative that gave folks vouchers for childcare, the likelihood to increase pre-apprenticeship participation is much, much greater. And so, that's actually something that we're exploring. We're part of that conversation. We've started with an initial grant from Bowley of $45,000 with some additional private money and to start this pilot of a project to see exactly how far we can take this and where it goes to address the female participation numbers. So those are just three things that I'm really excited about. I'm really excited that, I'm really excited to be part of this team now. It's very different from what I was doing, but this work is very near and dear to my heart. So if you guys have any questions, feel free.
Questions?
Make them easy, though.
Any questions?
First of all, just say I'm with you. I hate the term aspirational goals.
Thank you.
Goals are inherently aspirational, and I think it's used to, I imagine, to temper expectations. But clearly, there's so much great progress made, and I love the data collection and processing graphically the information and being highly transparent about it. I think in and of itself, the transparency is important and beneficial, but more than anything, but in addition to that, I think it really fuels a sense of competitiveness among contractors, which is really powerful. And I see it all the time as we're going through bidding processes. Not only do, do a lot of these contractors really want to do the right thing, but there is this spirit of competition and to try and, you know, meet these very sort of tangible number goals that, you know, I think just it's, it, it's something that they really take pride in.
Absolutely.
So I think it, it's effective that way, too. I'm curious, so what happens with partner, partners that aren't able to meet the, the goals or the requirements? What happens? And what's the?
Any number of things can happen, but the first step that I'm inclined to take is to find out why. And that's leaning on the power of my relationship with that person, with that contractor, with that organization and entity. I never like to be a stranger to anybody that we work with, so I will make sure to make myself available, let them know who I am, so that when there is a problem and they do run into problems, they know who to call. They know who to get a hold of and explain, "I'm having an issue with this. I had to replace a sub during this particular instance. Can I get assistance?" And so, I want to be clear with them upfront as early as I possibly can in the process that they should be able to rely on Prosper Portland as, as a service provider, too. If you run into trouble, know that you can call us. We can put you into contact with some of our partners like at MCIP or at Namco to try to either find a business to, to fill in for you. And in the cases where there simply isn't anybody, and they've come to us, they've talked to us, they've communicated with us, there's a problem, we've tried to reach out to another community partner to figure out if there's a solution for them. And if there just simply isn't, we're all at least aware of the problem and that we understand that they've actually, in all honesty, tried their hardest to try to, to fill that gap. And then we get into a process of exemptions and other things that, that we can to say, "Okay, we're going to let that go, but we know that we tried." But we all know that we tried. And in the cases where they just aren't communicative, they aren't responding, they aren't doing what they should be doing, there's a, there's a list of things that we can do. On the workforce side of things, it's more of the liquidated damages. We can assess a fee or a fine that they are required to pay, and then it gets, it goes up from there.
To tag on to that question, are there any, any implications further down the road for that contractor who may or may not exceed the standards in terms of further work as a criteria for selection?
There's, there's been talk around that. I haven't actually seen any of those kind of severe actions taken. But yeah, there's, there's plenty of conversation around the issue of debarment and excluding people or not accepting any offers that they might have on a, on a next project if they haven't performed well or in good faith. I haven't really explored what is legally available, and I'm sure Eric couldn't tell me hopefully before you leave what we're supposed to do here. But yeah, there's a, there's a series of things that we can, that we can look into. Thankfully, we haven't had that situation quite yet. It's a, it's a very real situation that I want to be ready for when, when the situation arises, though.
I just have more of a quick comment. Thank you. I think that tracking the data sort of mandates intentionality. It moves us away from aspiration and sort of keeps us intentional about what we're trying to do and adhering to the goals that we've projected. I, I would love to see more of sort of this upstream problem-solving of why there's less participation. And that's where we kind of put our scientific hats on and say, sort of take a public health approach and say, "If the fish are dying downstream, we're not going to keep looking downstream. We should probably look upstream and figure out what it is." So these ideas of, you know, rectifying or mitigating sort of stresses around childcare as a way of increasing women's or even single parent participation is great. But I also, I'm also thinking that this workforce issue, the, the pipeline is, is not broken. It's just nothing's flowing through it. So you have availability of positions, but, but not enough people to seize these opportunities. So part of the contractor's job and what, what a part of the role I think that Prosper Portland could potentially play is working with larger entities like the state, who actually is looking at these very same things and trying to, and actually has funding allocated for that to support these larger endeavors. So we talk about leveraging larger partnerships. We know for sure that, you know, now there's Oregon legislation that allows for two years of community college free, but the folks who would need to access this don't even know that it's a resource or how to access it. So it becomes questions of how we more thoughtfully leverage existing resources as opposed to trying to develop things. But I do believe that, you know, that's going to be the future of, of what we have to be actively playing a role in is how we help get things flowing through the pipeline. It's not broken. It's just, it's wide and open, but just nothing's flowing. So, I shouldn't say nothing, but it's not robustly flowing.
You're absolutely right. Absolutely right. And this is the comments that I hear a lot from folks on, on the workforce side of things, that the pipeline isn't broken. It's just not, as you say, it's not flowing the way that it could or that it should. And some of it downstream, on the job site, there's a cultural issue. There's an onsite job culture issue that needs to get addressed. And the first way that we can, the first line of defense that we have as Prosper Portland right now is that data. Show me the, show me the numbers. Show me the numbers, and let's get those numbers up. Let's continue to apply a friendly amount of pressure, but an unrelenting friendly amount of pressure to let's folks know that we're serious. We're serious about getting these numbers up. And that, and we've noticed, we've seen this already. It seems like whatever kind of fish that is, you put it in a fish tank, it'll grow to the size of that fish tank. That's what's happening out there, too. We increase these numbers, we, we ask for an increase in participation, and lo and behold, certain organizations meet it. It's there. It's there. We just need to do, and make sure that we're doing our part to be present and continue to apply that friendly but unrelenting pressure.
Two suggestions at either end of the pipeline. First, with respect to spreading the word, I think part of the, the general challenge that, that Prosper Portland's going through as its, its changing tack is, is a marketing challenge, right? Tremendous work, amazing programs, all, you know, working together to achieve that collective impact, and yet, on the street, right? It's, unless you're within the trades or unless you're deeply involved in the policy world, it's oftentimes unknown. You don't know what's going on. So I think one of the challenges of this program in particular is to work within the communities with other community organizations, not just the trades, right? To spread the word. I mean, both you and I participate in ASIANA, right? So it's a perfect organization to work through, right? To help spread the word and just build an educational base. So that's on one end of the pipeline. The other one is, people love parties, right? So if you create a reward system, you know, for, for the winners or the top performers, right? And it becomes an annual event, and it's a big deal, and people get prizes, and people, you know, wine and dine, and it's a big event, that reinforces, you know, that kind of culture of change.
Absolutely. And there's a really good model for that, that Trimet used at the end of the pedestrian bridge. They had a fantastic series of annual events as, as they were progressing through that project. It's a really good model for us to think about. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Well, great discussion, great comments, and excellent presentation, and thanks for your great work, really. I have nothing to add. All these comments have way exceeded what I was going to say. So just thank you so much for your great work. This is very exciting, so.
Chair Cruz?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me. We do need a motion, don't we? Thank you very much. I was carried away. All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve? Let me find the number. I apologize.
Resolution number 7282.
Perfect. That must be it. Thank you. All right. No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, item 11, action item. Authorizing an option to sublease 13.7 acres of leased property in the Airport Way Urban Renewal Area to Trammell Crowe, Portland Development, Inc. Lisa Abwaf, welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz and Commissioners. I am Lisa Abwaf, Development Manager with Prosper Portland. And before I start, I want to thank kind of the internal team of legal and somebody who's not with us today, who worked diligently on this project, who is Will Thier, who left us to take another position in the private sector in early July, but really, most of the work that I'm presenting here today is his. And then I also want to acknowledge external partners. We have Kirk Olson, who's here with Trammell Crowe. Should you have any questions and just to speak to kind of their vision for the, for So just in summary, by selling this property, we'll be activating property that's been vacant for 20 years out in Airport Way, and we'll be making kind of the opportunity for new jobs to tenant approximately 300,000 to 400,000 square feet of a new office building. As many of you know, kind of the Airport Way has long been an urban renewal area, very successful both financially on behalf of the city as well as in terms of job creation. So the particular parcels that we're here today to discuss is our parcels D and E that are highlighted on this map as yellow within the Cascade Station area of Airport Way. So you'll see kind of it's surrounded by some of the retail. Within Cascade Station, Prosper Portland actually acquired these properties as part of 30 acres that we bought in 2006. These are leasehold right interests, so much of the property out by the airport is under a lease contract with the port. And it was, we purchased it in satisfaction of kind of settling debt with Bechtel Corporation, who was a partner early on in Airport Way. Should we enter into this transaction and realize, and execute on the transaction? The remaining parcel that Prosper Portland would own is parcel G that you see here in blue. Our current plans for parcel G would just be to continue to hold on it. There's some discussions happening between the port and the Federal Aviation Administration regarding kind of use and development in this area, as well as some infrastructure improvements. And then the other thing I would just call out are three properties that we have seen transactions on in the past five years or so, or so, which is the FBI Building, Cook Security, and Holiday Inn. So more specifically to this particular transaction, we did list the property, and we've had it marketed for a pretty extensive period of time. We've seen pretty limited market demand on it, in part due to, there's a master plan that, that overlays certain requirements in terms of land use, and then it's unique in terms of the fact that it has a leasehold nature of property rights. We have actively marketed them for 10 years plus, and we haven't seen any feasible options that we've received. Trammell Crowe approached us about a year ago. They've done a significant amount of work in Airport Way. They were interested in the property listing, and they were interested in pursuing a tenant for the site, and that's what brings us here today. We see this opportunity as aligning with our strategic plan in multiple ways. First and foremost, it would further the agency goals around job creation. Again, Airport Way, similar to our other industrial and kind of office-focused markets, has been really important as a regional job center. As Justin and Tony presented, early on, we would also anticipate that this transaction actually feeds into our financial sustainability plan and is a return back to the agency as we, as we thought about how we structure it. And finally, Prosper Portland has a longstanding partnership and relationship with the port as we developed Airport Way, and this is a project that they are supportive of us pursuing. So the transaction summary, at a high level, I would just flag a couple of important items. You have the full document as well as a summary in front of you. First, we would be entering into a three-year option with Trammell Crowe, under which we would be paid a series of non-refundable payments of up to $240,000 over the three-year term. Second, compared to the earlier transactions I briefly mentioned in Airport Way that we've executed on in the past five years or so ago, we actually conventionally would assign our leasehold rights over to the partner, i.e., they would give us a lump sum of cash in exchange for our leasehold rights. This transaction, we're actually contemplating structuring it to create an ongoing revenue stream. The mechanism by which we're proposing to do that under this contract is a sublease. That would be a 65-year sublease with a payment of 5% of the gross revenue generated once the development is completed, or $500 per acre with escalation. As you may hear from Trammell Crowe, during this option period, they'll probably be doing additional work, both around kind of the financial feasibility of this particular structure of a deal and/or any tenancy constraints. However, they have confirmed that under any structure, Trammell Crowe is committed to partnering with the agency to realize ongoing revenue streams of the amount that's committed to under this sublease. We don't quite know yet what the 20% will be, as reflected in the presentation that John and Michael just provided to you, but we will require our business and workforce equity policy with construction on this site. And we'll incorporate that as we share with you ongoing reporting going forward. And with that, I will conclude. I'm trying to make up time, you guys.
I greatly appreciate that.
No problem.
We have questions, comments?
I don't know.
Lisa? Mr. Olson, would you like to say anything? Welcome. Nice to have you. Thanks for coming.
Oh, thanks for having me. Kirk Olson, Trammell Crowe Company. And really, just wanted to introduce myself and say thanks for the opportunity. As Lisa briefly mentioned, we do have a history at Cascade Station. We were the master developer starting in about '05. Construction kicked off in about '06. And we, in '08 and '09, delivered two office buildings at Cascade Station, just at the, sort of at the, the entrance there. One was a build-to-suit for a technical vocational institution, and the other was built on a speculative basis. So we believe in the area, obviously, rich amenity base, good mass transit, and so on. So we'd love to get some more employment-based opportunities out there. Trammell Crowe has, you know, a pretty long history of partnering with entities such as Prosper Portland. And, you know, Will and I kicked around this idea of, we'll call it a participating ground lease, based on our recent experience with the Port of Portland. We've done, I think it's 20-some different ground leases with the Port of Portland over our pretty long history here in Portland, and they've all been prepaid, you know, the assignment scenario. And we recently did a deal with the port to support the Amazon and Amazon Fulfillment Center in Rivergate that followed the structure that we're talking about, ongoing revenue. So we're excited, and we're excited to participate with you in this, in this project. So thanks for the opportunity.
Questions? Comments?
So the land use constraints, is, is retail allowed on these sites? Or is it?
No. You know, there is a master plan that, I should say, I've been at Trammell Crowe for five years, so Steve Wells, who was unable to be here, was the, the lead individual with Trammell Crowe that really has a grasp of the, the master plan of Cascade Station. But, but I can say briefly that no, retail is not allowed there.
And do you see that as a significant constraint to?
Well, it's a, it's, it's a constraint on the land, but I think it's one that we, that we have to live with. A lot of the uses get back to the original establishment of the master plan, which put limits on it. There are limits on how many parking, you know, stalls you can place. So really, office is the, I think, the sole allowed use for these particular parcels. We talked, we kicked around the idea of... We talked, we kicked around the idea of looking at a rezone, but given some of the traffic elements and the master plan and the hurdles associated with a use that we didn't think that it would make sense to explore further. And so that was, so we're operating that office is the only allowed use here. But we'd be willing to explore further a change of the master plan along with the port, if there's interest, so.
Do you have any potential tenants lined up?
Outright, right now, no. Over the years, we have proposed on the site, actually both sites. Banfield Hospital, when they vacated, was, you know, we were trying to keep them in Portland, keep them on this side of the river, and so we made a pretty good run at that with Prosper Portland's support, obviously. That was back in 2014. Most recently, there was a financial institution who announced that they were going to be leaving the downtown core, you know, as more of a back-office support function of that institution. So we took another run. It was a $120 million project proposal, but they will be leaving and heading west, is my understanding, so. So we've made some runs, and the intent here would be to market the facility, you know, in partnership more broadly, perhaps, and try and get a build-to-suit as we learn more about the property. You know, the suburban office sector, you know, still has good, strong absorption, believe it or not. You hear about all these deals downtown, which is great, obviously, but, you know, throughout the country, there's been more office absorbed in the suburbs than in central cities. And so, you know, perhaps we could talk about a speculative even arrangement. And our plan is to develop plans that will be able to suit particular users as they come along, but also perhaps if capital is there, if there's a good business case, to go forward with a speculative building as well.
Have you modeled anything yet in terms of trying to project what kind of lease revenue could come in to Prosper Portland, since it's based on gross revenues?
Yeah, at 5% of gross revenue, you know, there's a pretty wide range based on the type of building and the rent that would need to be charged. I know Will did models. I've done some models. I can't recall the numbers, but it's pretty easy math, I guess, at the end of the day, taking 30 bucks a square foot times.
It's 5% of gross revenue, or 500?
Right, but the higher of, so I would hope that your gross revenues would generate more.
You mentioned the Amazon transaction. How does this compare, how does this arrangement compare to the Amazon sublease, or do you know?
Well, there we had a tenant.
Right.
And so we had a building designed, and we knew what the rent was going to be. So there's a little higher surety of what that number might be. And here, we're framing it of, let's go find somebody and plug them into the system. But so that's the difference.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Well, I just did want to do the quick and dirty maths. I'm just curious, this kind of square footage that you think you'll be developing? Do you have a general range idea?
Yeah, anywhere from 100,000 square feet to 500,000 square feet. And it's that toggle, really, you know, so many things get back to parking. So you can get 500,000 square feet on both parcels if you, you know, put structured parking in. And our proposals to Banfield, as well as the other financial institution, were based on 300,000, 500,000 square feet with structured parking. So, you know, in our world, bigger is always better.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, there are no more questions then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to approve resolution number 7283?
Motion to approve. Second?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Item number 12 is an information item. This is an update on the North Northeast Community Development Initiative Action Plan. Tori Campbell and Kim Moreland here. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having us. Just a quick introduction. My name's Tori Campbell, and I manage our entrepreneurship and community economic development teams. And I'm joined with--
Kimberly Moreland, and I'm the project manager for the ECDD team.
And we're going to give you an update on the North Northeast Community Development Initiative Action Plan, and henceforth, I'll just be saying "Action Plan" because it's a bit of a mouthful to say the whole title every time we speak of it. But our conversation today will talk about some of the key takeaways that we've learned over the first year and a half as we've moved forward in terms of its implementation. We'll also talk about a summary of accomplishments to date and also future priorities, so. The first we want, again, is it's always good to ground this conversation with just a reminder that this action plan was really derived from a community-driven approach, where we spent an exhaustive amount of time engaging community members for over six months to help us better understand what are the appropriate ways to implement and utilize the remaining 32 million of tax increment financing. And we feel very confident that at least the current approach has built into it some necessary strategies and assumptions that are trying to meet these needs of creating widely shared prosperity, particularly for community members within the interstate who historically have not benefited. And so for us, that's also obviously on folks of color, particularly African-American community. The priorities, again, of the remaining 32 million, and we'll begin to talk to you over the next few moments of how we've gone about really leaning into the action plan and some of the accomplishments to date, and also some of the priorities moving forward. Again, it falls within our strategic alignment outcomes around the creation of jobs, prosperity, the importance of partnerships to leverage and do this work, and creating vibrant neighborhoods. We have a brief map, just, it's always good, just to give you a sense of the geography in which we are talking about. And I'm going to just take a few minutes to talk a little bit about an important group, which is our North Northeast Initiative Oversight Committee. And they were formed in May of 2017. And maybe you've had an opportunity over the last year to attend some of these committee meetings. And their responsibility is really is about partnership to help us oversee the implementation of the action plan. They also participate in subcommittees that deliver on the action plan, of which we have currently have eight subcommittees. They're not all running concurrently, but over the last year, we've seen eight subcommittees form. And as you know, many of you have participated on committees. A lot of the real work actually happens in the subcommittees, and so we're actually really pleased to see a very active and engaged committee wanting to do this work with us and wanting to push this initiative forward. Now, they also provide guidance and advice for the staff in terms of best ways or things to think about in terms of ensuring that best practices are always being employed. I would say, when we think about the work to date, both working with the Oversight Committee and thinking about the whole concept of community engagement, there are definitely some learning lessons, or lessons learned, I should say, and I'll just highlight a few of them. I would say probably the first one is we, I wouldn't say pleasantly surprised, but it is still refreshing and very powerful to see that the community is still engaged. That, and also we have a new wave of engagement. I think one of the unique things around this Oversight Committee is that it's comprised of individuals who maybe who have not historically participated, and I think that's important to note as the demographics and the age of our city changes, as we have new individuals that are coming up. Sometimes the grandchild of that grandmother who was displaced or who participated on committees and rallied to try to see change, it's actually really encouraging to see that there's still a constant engagement, and people are showing up wanting to help us do this work and get it right. I would say some other learning lessons is slow is fast. Like, I think as much as we are still eager to see these things happen, we have a five-year kind of timeline, and in terms of working with the community, we realize that many a time, slow is fast. For us, we live in this work. We eat, drink it, and sadly sometimes dream about it at night. But when we speak to them about this, for many of them, this is the first time they're hearing it. So we're still having to kind of temper our expectations around turnaround time, learning curve. We also realize that nothing can replace the time of just learning. And I think so much of what has really shown to be the greatest work this year with the Oversight Committee is just they needed a year to get brought up to speed on concepts that are new, but probably oftentimes the concept isn't new, just the jargon is, you know, and how things work. And so we feel very confident that moving forward, that learning has taken place, and we feel like they can begin to work at it at an optimum level of engagement. And then also the last thing I'll say, and then I'll transition over to Kim, and she can tell you more of the outcomes that we've seen in terms of investment, is the thing of, that living in that tension, and my grandpa would say, "Take your time, but make it quick." And I feel like a lot of times this work is that. It's this desire to go slow, to get fast, but we also are dealing with market forces, constrained timelines, and so you're always having this tension of wanting to be, to honor the pace of learning, but also the unique opportunities that present themselves, that you need people to respond and engage. And so we're just living in that tension of how to do with integrity and also doing in a way that we are taking advantage of the moment. So, real quick, the accomplishments from the Oversight Committee in the last year have been things like the adoption of a project charter and the creation of a decision-making process map, which doesn't sound that important, but it's actually really important, which is getting an understanding of who's doing what, whose decision is whose, and what's our role in this, to, again, to eliminate some of the ambiguity and frustration, a feeling as though they've been invited to make a decision and realizing that they only had this portion of it. So again, it's trying to create clarity of roles. Assisted in Prosper Portland staff with the reviewing and the selection of 15 Community Livability Grants. They also assisted the staff in reviewing and the selection of MISO, Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon, as our North Northeast Business Navigator, and they've done that for the last year. And again, as I mentioned, they've participated in quite a few subcommittees. So we are, in many ways, excited about what the future holds and the work that we can do together with this Oversight Committee, as well as with the community at large. At this time, I'm going to transition over to Kim, and she's going to tell you more of the data points of our accomplishments to date.
Thank you for the opportunity to kind of, to share our accomplishments to date. Since the adoption of the action plan almost 18 months ago, Prosper Portland has invested almost $5 million to nonprofit organizations, homeowners, business owners, and longtime property owners of color within the Interstate Quarter of a renewal area. And this is pretty significant when you think about, these are individual small business owners and property owners, and it does not represent the large-scale development. And the Prosperity Investment Program and Mashing Grant and the Community Livability Grant Program continue to be our largest investment, and which have exceeded our original investment targets. As I said, the medium in large-scale businesses, however, have not experienced much growth, and part of that is the complexity and longevity of the development process. And as a result, staff has developed a request for a proposal to assist long-term property owners with the real estate services and technical assistance, and we hope to get that RFQ out this week, in hopes of providing education about the development process. And a more detailed accomplishment of these, a more detailed summary of these accomplishments is in the North Northeast Community Development Progress Report. And the focus of our 2018 through 2019 priorities include working with our community partners to increase awareness and access to Prosper Portland's Financial and Technical Assistance Program through a robust community outreach strategy, including collaborating more closely with MISO, our Business Navigator. Also, we plan to review and make adjustments in our investment allocation. For example, the Portland Housing Bill administers $5 million that's allocated towards home repair, down payment assistance program, as well as accessory dwelling unit. And due to changing priorities, the Portland Housing Bill leadership decided not to go forward with that. And so we'll be working with our CDI committee to help us determine where to reallocate those funds. Another focus is exploring amendments to the Interstate Quarter, Urban Renewal Area, to increase our maximum indebtedness, as well as to include new properties. Another focus is coordinating with the Hill Block Working Group. Should the Interstate Quarter of Renewal come into the, is amended to include Hill Block property, we will work with the Oversight Committee to coordinate with the project working group. And finally, we will continue to assess and implement those action plan goals that have not fully materialized. And as you know, the $32 million of TIF resources is targeted towards people of color who have not, you know, historically participated or benefited from opportunities in the Interstate of a renewal area. And just to kind of give you a little breakdown, as I mentioned before, the PIP program has been our largest investment, and had resulted in 49 grants. And majority of those, 92% of those grants, have been awarded to people of color, and 19 grants, almost 39%, have been awarded to African-Americans. And we're really pleased with those results and looking forward to improving upon those metrics. At this time, do you have any questions?
No question? Oh.
Pastor Haynes Church in the, is it? Dr. Haynes? Allen Temple?
Yeah.
And what was the name of the, it's just more of a question, the name of the, was it Dean's? Dean's Hair Salon? So they were both added into the URA as sort of black-owned or ran businesses in an effort to effectively participate, to be able to ask for or to be eligible for these funds?
Yes. And both of those properties or organizations have, are participating in the PIP, Dean Beauty and Boba Shoppe are participating in our PIP program. And Allen Temple received a CLG, as well as going through our loan program.
Okay. So they both received funding? Okay. That's just good to know, for my information. Thank you.
That's along the lines of what I was going to ask, is just if you wouldn't mind, if you had just a few examples you could throw out of some grants that you thought were especially well-received in the community. It might be nice for Commissioners to hear about those. I guess those would be a couple, right? Any others come to mind?
In terms of like the CLG grant and the PIP grant? One PIP recipient was Dove of St. John's. He was a business that was a long MLK and experienced some vandalism and was out of business, and he found a location through working with one of our staff members. And now he's located in St. John's Main Street, and he received a PIP grant for HVAC system, flooring, signage, and some other interior remodels. Also, Allen Temple received a CLG grant to improve some of the, to rebuild a fellowship hall that provides a lot of community services to surrounding neighborhoods. We also have Dean Beauty and Boba Shoppe, which is the oldest African-American business in Portland and located, been there for three generations, and we're providing funds for interior improvement as well as exterior improvement. And she's also seeking a loan, a request in a loan product as well. Any others that come to mind?
Those are great examples. Thank you very much. Fantastic.
Question. So how well is the source of funding aligning with the demand? Are we able to meet the requests? Are there a lot of folks that are going unfunded because of limited resources?
Yeah. I would say with the PIP grant, we are exceeding what our initial goal was, but we were able to utilize the 32 million in a way that we're meeting those demands. But it's been a good thing. It's been really a good success. So the PIP grant and CLG have been both really successful. I think the areas where we are finding it's not fully materializing-- I think the areas where we are finding it's not fully materializing yet is around long-term property development, as well as some of the business supports in terms of loans and opportunities to, to purchase property. So I think those are the things that we are really trying to focus in on this year to better understand, is it a matter of we're not doing a good job reaching those individuals? Or is it a matter of they don't exist? And so that we need to kind of prove out our assumptions with the initial action plan? Or do we need to make some adjustments in the way in which our products are currently structured that would make it more useful and meaningful for those particular participants? So I would say this, this year, that's really what our primary objective is.
So there's some untapped resources? I mean, I guess, let me frame it another way. Are there any applicants, qualified applicants, that are, that are denied funding?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, if there are denied funding, oftentimes, it's because they do not meet enough criteria as being long-term property owner, person of color. And it's very rare that that happens. But sort of, you would have to fall within a criteria that was adopted with the North Northeast Action Plan.
Just a quick comment, I love the idea of a, a business cultural hub, similar to what Mercado has done over, over and on Foster Road. I'm curious to, to know if there's, if there's a strong support within the community for something like that? And if so, what the timeline would look like for the pre-development development process?
Yeah, there is, again, the Action Plan, it was a clearly community-driven process. And so that was a conversation we actively had. I think the community has been a little mixed on a cultural business hub in the sense of understanding its, its impact and it being felt. I think there were some who saw the, the benefit of creating these spaces where you can have that kind of synergy. Others felt like in the, in the past, it had fallen short and really fully delivering on it, creating wealth opportunities for a larger group, as opposed to just one or two, like the developer and the property owner. So we landed kind of in a compromise where we see its value, we're still moving forward. As a, even as an example, our subcommittee met for the CDI just, this past week to talk around moving forward on the cultural business hub. We were supposed to have a notice of funding within the first six months of the Action Plan's adoption. So we're behind on that, but the plan is to move forward here in the next season and actually issue that so we can begin to have a fuller conversation and also make it available so that we can see who's out there, who's interested. Because we've had some folks already come to us saying, I'm waiting, let us know. We have properties or we have ideas, we'd like to be able to take advantage of that. So we definitely want to explore that.
I'm, I'm not sure, we, Francesca and I had a meeting a while ago with Mercy Corps Northwest, who are modeling a, I don't know where they stand with that pilot project. And basically, it's a co-investment, they created some form of REIT structure, right? Where they would have the community invest together into a similar kind of business culture hub. I don't remember exactly where the property is located that they worked with, but it's somewhere here in the Northeast, yeah.
Yeah, it's a great model, I know it's one you're referring to, where members of the community can invest.
Yes, correct.
And we are exploring different models. One of the things, at our last meeting, the subcommittee members started to jot down, what are some of the things they would like to see in, in a community benefit agreement? A cultural hub that benefits like Tori said, more than just a developer, but provides some wealth creation opportunities for a small business owner, a place that where people can return to or enjoy a cultural center that's identified with African-American experience. And it was, it was really a great meeting because we began to kind of shape the vision for what a cultural hub would look like and had some local examples like the Makata and to kind of, and others throughout the United States that may provide the kind of wealth-creating opportunity and a place for entertainment and, and culture.
Yeah, at least in broad strokes, from what I understand of the report and the work that you've done. This could be a good opportunity for precisely that kind of, of community investment trust.
Very much so, yeah.
Okay, no further questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, can I just, I apologize. I just want to recognize the incredible work that has gone into this over the last eighteen months. We have never gotten out five million dollars in small increments at this magnitude and with this intentionality. So I just want to thank you, Kim, for your leadership and Tori for your leadership on this and to the entire team, because Bernie and Sue, and there's a whole bunch of people who are making this happen. So I just want to recognize and appreciate your work and, and leadership. So thank you, apologies, but thanks.
Thank you so much. Okay, so next up, we have item thirteen. This is also an information item, this is an update on the North District Development Agreement. And Lisa Abwaf is back. Welcome back.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm still Lisa Abwaf, Development Manager with Prosper Portland, and I am here to present an update on current discussions with the Zidell family regarding the North District Development Agreement and what many of you have probably seen in recent press regarding the joint agreement to terminate the Development Agreement from 2015. To provide you a little bit of background on both the 2015 Development Agreement and how we came to that point approximately a couple of weeks ago, I want to thank Geraldine Moyle, who was a huge attribute to this agency and was very diligent in working over seven years towards this Development Agreement and our partnership with the Zidell family. I would like to thank any number of people at the city, across city bureau staff. They were with us every step of the way, as well as city leadership. And last but not least, I would also like to thank the Zidell family for the commitment, their commitment to the city, for their master plan, for their vision of a legacy that they would like to leave to the city and the development team that they hired to help them execute on that. So I thought it might be helpful to start with a little bit of history. Kind of, we live and breathe this day in, day out as agency staff, but knowing that others don't, kind of just commemorating the work that the city has done down in South Waterfront to set the context for our partnership with Zidell. So our investments and efforts down in South Waterfront stem all the way from the nineteen eighties and nineteen nineties, prior to the North McAdam Urban Renewal Area being in existence. River Place properties were donated to Prosper Portland at that time, and we've seen them develop over multiple phases, including, including the most recent phase for affordable housing at Parcel Three. What you see next is down in that area that's titled the Central District, which many of us know as kind of where the Center for Health and Healing and much of OHSU's kind of daily operations are held for their client base. We entered into a Development Agreement in 2003 with both OHSU and a private developer named North McAdam Investors. That involved us investing approximately a hundred and twenty million dollars worth of public resources into that district to realize the vertical development and the jobs that were generated. And that location of the hundred and twenty million, approximately seventy to eighty, was invested from tax increment financing. The city then helped support a streetcar line expansion to South Waterfront originally from Portland State University, and then it was extended as they made the link across to the Central East Side. In 2010, with Prosper Portland's support, the city pursued a Tiger Grant to help fund what we call the Southwest Moody Alignment. What we'll speak to a little bit as we go through this presentation is the role of Southwest Moody and Southwest Bond are key and critical to the growth of South Waterfront for both our, as an economic engine, as well as as a neighborhood, because otherwise, there are pinch points at both the north end and the south end of the district. The Zidell family, as we kind of were entering into discussions, completed what they called the Emery, that exists on Block Two of their property. The TriMet Orange Line completed and opened. It was done with, it's a billion-dollar investment regionally. It was done with a significant investment from the city and from Prosper Portland via ten million of urban renewal dollars in North McAdam. And then most recently, in 2015, in anticipation of both the Development Agreement with Zidell, as well as with Portland State University, we made amendments to the North McAdam Urban Renewal Area, and we entered into the two Development Agreements. The Zidell family, one of which we will discuss further today. So this gives you a sense of the timeline more specifically to our discussions with the Zidell family. Again, those negotiations started back in 2010 in and around the time that the Zidell family and ZRZ Realty were working on what they would call their bankwork, so kind of the cleanup of the riverbank that you'll see if you go out there, their environmental cleanup and cap. They then completed Block Two, and we, as a city, made an investment primarily through system development charges into Southwest Grover that provides access to the Emery. In 2015, we entered into the Development Agreement, and concurrently, the board approved an intergovernmental agreement with PBOT for us to start to design Southwest Bond north of Porter. So you'll hear a lot of these names over and over again. Southwest Porter delineates the line of property ownership for the developable land between OHSU and Zidell. So it was such that we could build Bond concurrent with OHSU building the Night Cancer Facility. That then moved into construction at the same time as Zidell was completing their master plan. And then in 2018, based on a lot of the work that had been done by the master plan, including refinement of infrastructure phasing, open space, et cetera, we conducted additional cost estimating and really sat down and leaned into discussions around a funding and financing strategy with Zidell, which resulted in the announcement for a joint termination. So just to kind of recall back, recollect back to 2015 around the North District Development Agreement. Under that agreement, it assumed the development would start from the north end of the Zidell property south, so moving kind of from the Tillicum Bridge and the Light Rail south to the Barge, Barge Building. Part of the goal of that was to allow for the Barge facility to continue operations for as long as the Zidell family wanted it prioritized. It committed to about 1.4 million square feet of development in multiple phases. But the key date that we've always tracked for the Development Agreement is 2025, because that's the last date to issue debt within the urban renewal area. And it contemplated about thirty million dollars of public investment into key priorities that we have heard repeatedly from our community partners as we go out into South Waterfront, as well as key institutional partners from PSU to OHSU around the importance of Bond Street, the full length of Bond Street, to make sure that we don't have pinch points in the district for folks who are going down to use OHSU's services, or who live down there, or who are recreating down there. The importance of the full length of Greenway connecting from the Central District to River Place, which is where it terminates at either end today. The importance of a park, and it contemplated a park at Ross Island for this area. The importance of an opportunity for the Housing Bureau to acquire land. So there were actually negotiated land rights for the Housing Bureau within the, within the Development Agreement, and then making sure that there were resources that could support economic development growth and opportunities within the district. So as I mentioned, in late 2016, early 2017, the Zidell family released their master plan. I think there was and continues to be strong and coordinated support for the realization of this vision and potential benefits that came with the master plan as they took a look at development and really dove into the details of open space connectivity, programming, phasing, kind of density of development, et cetera, is that there continued to be a priority for affordable housing, both within the Housing Bureau's acquisition rights, which could accomplish about a hundred and fifty to two hundred units. And then they anticipated that additional units via inclusionary housing, about a hundred units of those would be accomplished as part of Phase One. You'll note that there was a great amount of detail that was put into thinking about open space and kind of a sequence of parks, the function that the Greenway would, would play to support vertical development, the importance of Bond all the way through kind of the multiple phases of development. And then they contemplated around economic development, about 500,000 square feet of office, which translates into kind of a significant addition of jobs into the district. One of the things that kind of distinguished their 2017, 2018 plan from the 2015 discussions we had had is rather than starting at the north end of their property, they anticipated starting at the south end of their property, which you saw as a result was kind of the conclusion of their barge functions on the site. And then the other thing that they really started to dig into was what would occur phasing-wise at that south end of the district. What you'll note is there were a lot of similarities, and then there were some distinct differences in terms of their phasing. So the similarity, similar to the 1.4 million that was originally contemplated in the Development Agreement, about 1.2 million of square footage was anticipated to be completed prior to 2025, that they continued to prioritize kind of the role of Bond and the role of the Greenway to creating the place that we all aspire to. And then there was, there were additional infrastructure elements that were introduced, including east-west streets, the Gantry Plaza, some additional kind of local streets. And the total cost for all of the infrastructure as part of Phase One, which you see kind of on the left, highlighted in green together with the localized streets, was a sixty-million-dollar figure. So you'll see, this is kind of as they talk about a sixty-million-dollar figure, this is the figure that they're speaking to. What you'll note was not contemplated as part of Phase One was continuing Bond through to connect at Porter and continuing the Greenway through to connect at River Place and, and kind of including that area that, that Zidell owns adjacent to OHSU's properties. So a little bit more detail about what you've seen us present in the press is we made an offer, and we're prepared to kind of bring forward to both you and City Council, a proposal that we invest fifty-three million dollars total in public investment. That public investment, you'll see both kind of where did those sources come from and what, what did we anticipate using them for on this slide. Of the fifty-three million, about forty-seven million was dedicated to infrastructure, to ensure that we got the full length of Bond, the full length of the Greenway, a contribution to both Ross Island Bridge Park and Heritage Park, and then memorializing PHB's Affordable Housing Land Acquisition Rights. And we had completed an appraisal, as was called for, in the original Development Agreement. And so that 6.2 million was kind of the result of the appraised amount times the square footage. So as we did this assessment, we also took a look on kind of at the, the payback period based on that scale of investment. So that scale of investment to the tune of forty-seven million that was split about fifty-fifty between tax increment financing and system development charges from our infrastructure bureaus. The return showed that when we modeled the development, Zidell had shared with us in terms of the phasing, the program, the value of that development and the timing for when the, the property taxes would roll on, is about twenty million dollars present value between now and the end of the, of the district in 2025. And of that, eight million was from tax increment financing, and approximately twelve million was from the PBOT and Park System Development Charges that the Zidell projects would be generating towards the city's contribution. If you kind of rolled that further forward, approximately an additional fifteen million of tax increment would be generated by around 2029, 2030. So that full twenty-three million would be returned in about a fifteen-year period. And then with ZRZ's investment, kind of the base deficits of the urban renewal area, which would contribute more resources back to the city, would be expedited by a year. So we also made sure that we took a look at our commitment against the remaining resources within the North McAdam Urban Renewal Area just to understand what the implications would be, because it would be tying up resources that would pay back over that, that fifteen-year period. So there's about a hundred and fifty-six million left in the North McAdam Urban Renewal Area. Of that, sixty-four million is set aside towards affordable housing via Portland Housing Bureau. There's an additional seventeen million, as I referenced in the PSU Development Agreement, that continues to be an obligation of the agency. And then you see the twenty-three million here that, that we are contemplating committing towards the Zidell Yards project. The remaining non-set-aside funds for additional economic development priorities between now and 2025 was there for fifty-two million. The additional costs for Zidell, kind of based on their future phases of development, including making sure that we could build out what they felt they needed for Phase One, was approximately thirty-seven million. And they prioritize kind of making sure that Phase One could get going while we were prioritizing making sure that Bond and kind of the Greenway were carried all the way from the south end of the district to the north. That created an additional cost for them that they were contemplating of about thirty-seven million. We indicated that we were willing to partner with them, look at a loan structure, either through tax increment financing or a city structure such, such as a local improvement district. At that time, Zidell indicated they were not interested in kind of a loan structure, that it really needed to happen as a grant for their private financing to be feasible. And that's what resulted in the joint agreement to terminate. Next, steps-wise, we continue. We just met about a week, two weeks ago as a city just to kind of reassess where we prioritize both our system development charge and tax increment resources that we do have available down in this area. The Housing Bureau, as you may recall, owns the full, the remaining portion of Parcel Three down in River Place, so they have the ability to execute on affordable housing as soon as, as the budget resources come available to realize those hundred and fifty to two hundred units. There are additional potential housing sites that they would be interested in looking at, both in, in the both in the southern part of the district, as well as Harbor Nato. With regards to economic development, as I mentioned, kind of in addition to Bond Street, South Portal has long been a priority for the North Macadam area, because you do have a pinch point at the south end of the district that's not addressed today, so you have one point of access in and out at Bancroft. And looking at development opportunities that may come available as those infrastructure improvements are created. The Office of Transportation will continue to prioritize South Portal and making sure that there's kind of checking in to see if there are opportunities for Southwest Bond to be built as Zidell develops. And then last but not least, is working with the Parks Bureau that similarly is interested in pursuing where there are opportunities, Greenway with adjacent development, whether that's as OHSU continues to grow at the Stinson Campus, knowing that the Zidell family owns much of that Greenway along OHSU, to see if there's a potential partnership there, as well as to look for park options either under the Ross Island Bridge, which is city-held land, or at the south end of the district. So with that, I will conclude and just see if there are any questions.
Questions?
Not sure I'm clear on the next steps and what that means. So for instance, Bond Street, I mean, is there the possibility of just going ahead and building that out?
There is, and I don't want to, I don't want to speak on behalf of our Transportation Bureau, but I will kind of step in and see if I can, I'll do my darndest. There is, I think they're hesitant to do that until kind of they know that development requires it. So bond will be completed up until Porter. I think what they're, what they're going to take, they have modeled certain scenarios with Zidell development coming online. They're looking at whether or not they model something kind of potentially without development occurring on Zidell to see what amount of bond needs to be built and when, and if you can do it kind of on a block-by-block scenario as Zidell comes in for development, rather than doing it in kind of one, or is there benefit to doing it in one fell swoop?
And the Greenway, you mentioned, I believe, too, saying there might be an opportunity for a partnership there, perhaps? Is that right?
Yeah. We continue to remain open and holding conversations with Zidell. I think if there's opportunities for incremental partnership as development occurs, whether that's on OHSU, because Zidell does own the Riverward portions, or the Greenway portions of, that abut OHSU's properties, if Zidell is interested in kind of working with the city on a partnership so that the Greenway builds concurrent with OHSU, there's interest. I think the Parks Department is probably, is hesitant to build a Greenway without knowing what's going to go adjacent to it, just because very often, both for design commission and for construction purposes, knowing both what the permanent improvements are going to be and the building that's going to abut it, becomes very important, particularly in South Waterfront, where much of your infrastructure is actually built up, so you want to build it at the same time as you're doing development.
What does Prosper need to see in order to get back to the table?
You want me to do? We, I would say, we continue to prioritize, and I was, and we hear this annually from community members, is really to see a feasible and kind of financial investment by us that realizes the full length of bond, the full length of the Greenway, and affordable housing and economic development opportunities. I think we're hesitant to move down a path where we see a portion of those, knowing that that's really what's going to benefit the full district growth.
And when you say economic development opportunities, is that specific to OHSU, or is that cut across?
I think it cuts across, kind of across the board, so I think it's really important. It's one of the reasons we've always prioritized bond, is without bond, OHSU can't grow, because literally they can't get folks in and out of the district. But also economic opportunities in terms of the office program that Zidell was anticipating placing on their property, we'll continue to look for commercial opportunities, given the role that this area plays within the innovation quadrant and jobs.
Okay, so that was specific to the tech cluster specifically?
No, Innovation Quadrant's looking at kind of a couple, it's looking at the role of bioscience and bioscience research, and kind of companies who are interested in being adjacent to OHSU. They're actually looking at the overlap between apparel and health, and really what they're starting to have, and again, I'm not the most informed spokesperson, but I'll speak on behalf of the trolls here, is working with the Innovation Quadrant, but looking at technology kind of within apparel, and then definitely within kind of the tech industry that's very much active in the central, more active in the Central East Side today.
All right, thanks very much. That was great. Okay.
Can I just adjourn? Can I, just 30 seconds?
What, I'm sorry?
Can I just say something?
Sure.
As Tony came back here, I just feel like we sort of nonchalantly approved the strategic plan without properly just sort of celebrating the tremendous effort that you and Justin and the rest of your team put into it. I just think it's a really well-crafted document, and we just sort of like, yes! But I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, tremendous effort, and I think the document itself is just really well-crafted, so thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, so we have one last item. This is number 14, an information item, an update on the Oregon Harbor of Hope Portland Homeless Navigation Center. Kira Stasman.
I guess I get to say good evening, Chair Cruz and Commissioners. I want to introduce my companions at the podium here to give you an update on the opportunity to provide space for the Oregon Harbor of Hope Navigation Center on property that is owned by Prosper Portland under a lease obligation for the navigation center that they're intending to provide. So with me, I have Lisa Mirandis, who is the Deputy Director and Operations Manager of Oregon Harbor of Hope, and from the Mayor, Mayor Ted Wheeler's office, Brooke Nelson, who's a senior advisor, who's been partnering on this project. So we're here to kind of give you an update on the progress of what they're working on in terms of due diligence on the property and to answer questions that you may have. So no actions required today, just to give you an update on progress for the project that was announced back in April, I believe. The property associated with this project is under the Broadway Bridge, and it's about one, almost two acres of land bounded by Nader Parkway and a private property owner, as well as the bridge itself. So there is property both under the bridge and adjacent to the bridge, along Nader Parkway. And the intent for Prosper Portland is to lease the land, actually to Office of Management and Finance, and then they in turn would sublease to Oregon Harbor of Hope under a sublease agreement. So that's the intended transaction. We don't intend to sell the property. Really what's going on here is with the crisis and homelessness in the city of Portland, all of us are mucking in to figure out how we can best serve the population in need. The folks at Oregon Harbor of Hope came to the Mayor's Office, and the Mayor's Office in turn came to us to see if there were property that could be available for this unique construction technique that would allow for a shelter to be stabilized and put together, but also taken down and reused at another time. And this property seems suitable for their purposes, and they've been investing in due diligence to understand what it, what we'll need to bring this project to fruition. So, I guess. I'm gonna just let this illustration stand for what is forecast. This navigation center would provide shelter, but also as a place for homeless and other services to be provided for folks that would be coming through it. So it's not a permanent shelter, but instead a navigation center, and I'll let Lisa talk about the specifics of its intended operation. But it's a springform structure, so not a permanent structure, so more than a tent, but less than a structured building that could be situated on this, under the site. From a transaction standpoint, Prosper Portland would lease the property to OMF, as I described earlier, for no cost. They in turn would turn and provide a sublease that would really contain the meat of how this property would be operated, so it would not be the responsibility of Prosper Portland staff to operationalize the lease for the navigation center, but that would in turn be OMF's responsibility. So our proposal is for an initial term of two years, once the project is fully certified, or it's all of the certifications from the various agencies that would have to weigh in on it. So that includes the P-Bot, it includes the building permits for it, as well as a pretty significant investment in remediation, because this property does have some hazards associated with it that are known to Prosper Portland, so it's under an obligation to the Department of Environmental Quality, and these folks are working through what that means for positioning this site. So the Oregon Harbor of Hope would be coordinating with our staff on getting permits associated with putting this together, and our staff, particularly around the remediation, would be working hand and glove to provide for what is needed under the DEQ regulations. So that's the basic terms. We are now, under this rubric, we are working on the terms of a letter of intent to OMF, but with, obviously with Oregon Harbor of Hope in the room, and working to provide for the concerns that all the permitting bureaus are going to have, as well as the operational needs of the Oregon Harbor of Hope's Navigation Center.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having us. Thank you for your overall description. Again, Lisa Mirandis, glad to be here. I wanted to kind of jump into some of the inner workings of what our plans are for the Navigation Center. We plan to operate the facility in conjunction with TPI, Transition Projects, and they will be our operator, but we will oversee the center in terms of oversight for operations overall. We're working on sort of fine-tuning what that's going to look like. We're just beginning the negotiations and what we'd like to see, based on our parameters as an operator, and our vision, and what that looks like. So we're collaborating and starting sort of the process of the language that the agreement will be incorporating. But in terms of sort of a day-to-day process, this facility will house approximately 120, beds for 122, 120. We originally were talking about families, but we understand that there are some shelters that have been closed in town, and particularly a male shelter that you probably know about on the east side, I believe. And so we decided to dedicate the shelter initially to all male. It's an all-male facility. We think that'll really help, too, in terms of sort of the inner workings initially and what the layout will look like. It's a 24-hour facility. Folks will be able to stay, and they will also be able to have their pets with them in the facility, and we have that kind of under design. We are collaborating with several other partners in the community. It is a community effort, and we're working diligently right now to kind of outline what that partnership looks like and what each entity will bring to the table, whether it's case management, transitional housing, dependent upon sort of, I guess, the minute they walk through the door, they'll have a treatment plan, per se. So it's specific to each individual needs. We plan to handle the intake piece, it's not going to be a queuing-type situation, which is a concern for some in the neighborhood, but rather, that will be off-site, and that will be handled through partnering referrals. So in other words, if someone is looking to admit or come to the center, that would have to be handled through the intake process elsewhere. And we'll have certain criteria, of course, and agreements to, you know, procedures and how folks, it's how folks should adhere to our, I don't want to say rules, but certain parameters for their stay. That intake process, as I said, will take place off-site, no queuing at all. And that's a concern that the community has posed several times, based on other shelters in town, and we want to make that very clear. In terms of what they expect to experience as a NAV center, when someone admits, they will have an assigned bed. And that, at that time, we will start to collaborate with a case manager, perhaps mental health services, whether there's direct medical care, dental services, all of which have been donated from the collaborators. So we've gotten amazing partnerships going. We have work programs, you know, whatever that particular person is needing in a way for strengthening, getting back on their feet, and transitioning to the next step. This is by no means a place to stay permanently. This is a place to navigate. It's a place to stabilize and transition out of, okay? So that is what it's going to look like. We expect that this will be a successful project, and we will look to have others in town. So we look to this as a beginning of a really amazing partnership with a lot of entities, such as yourself, and are working very closely with the neighborhood associations as well. And I can elaborate on that, too.
Thanks, Lisa. I think, you know, in partnership with the Mayor's Office, it's great to see the private sector step up and take responsibility, along with the public sector, in providing for, particularly for innovative solutions to a really intractable challenge that we all face in livability in the city, and for providing for opportunities to really look forward and try to see how we can best have a more comprehensive approach to the homelessness problem here in Portland. You know, Brooke, if you want to add from the Mayor's perspective?
Yeah. Good evening again. I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you very much, Prosper, for engaging in this effort and allowing us to have this conversation. The housing epidemic, chronic homelessness, is not something that's restricted just to the city of Portland. It's not something that's just restricted to the state of Oregon. This is a nationwide epidemic. And we're not naive enough to think that the city of Portland can solve this problem by itself. Frankly, I don't even know if it is a solvable problem. What we're trying to do is address the immediate need, and that is to provide a stabilization process for those who are seeking housing. This partnership between the public sector and the private sector, academia, this is something that's necessary right now. And I just want to reiterate the fact that we are doing what we can right now to address that issue, and without your help, it's not something that could be achieved. So I just wanted to let you guys know that our office is extremely grateful, and we're very hopeful that this is something that's going to hopefully set a trend for other areas within the city of Portland, and hopefully nationwide. This will be a model that other states and cities and counties will look towards. So, thank you.
So this investigation is being driven by Oregon Harbor of Hope and a private set of citizens, really Homer Williams, Bob Stoll, Don Mazzati, and with an inspired presence by Tim and Mary Boyle, who've made the initial fundraising effort to bring this Navigation Center to reality. So that's the private partners. I think we're here to talk to you about any questions that you have about the Prosper process, and how we're involved and might be involved, or some of the challenges that we'll face with this project. And again, for other folks at the podium to chime in on their issues as well, so we're open to questions that you may have for us.
Thank you. Few comments and maybe a question. So I do think that the issue of houselessness is one that everyone has to kind of work to resolve, so it's kind of an all-hands-on-deck. So I appreciate the fact that the private sector and business partners and private citizens want to be a part of the solution. That is commendable. In this effort to, I won't even say the word resolve, but to meet an immediate and current need, I think that there are things that I just want to lay out there. need, I think that there are things that I just want to lay out there that hopefully the mayor's office and, of course, your organization and Prosper Portland will continue to think about. And that is, for me, thinking about building a houseless transitional sort of shelter or transitional kind of housing navigation center under a bridge, symbolically, just think about that for a moment. We're putting a houseless shelter kind of under and adjacent to a bridge. So that's one piece. That's my own personal, has nothing to do with Prosper, just sort of from a kind of humanity-type perspective. The second one is one of safety and thinking about structurally the bridge and it being safe, environmental concerns, and making sure that even in our help for the most vulnerable, that we're not giving them, we want to make sure we're giving them our best help. In other words, that we're looking at all of these things and considering every single aspect of this, right? And what really makes this project, we keep using the word "innovative," there are many, many organizations that service the houseless community with wraparound services and case management, but not all of them have had big donors, right, to come through to support it. So that's what makes it great. And I do have high hopes for this model. But I also want to make sure that, again, the services and the provision of services themselves are quality and that we're thinking about what contributes to houselessness in the first place. So that we're not just placing, I know we can't do everything, but if we have this sort of intentional opportunity, that we do need to think about things like mental health assessments, screening for substance use, screening for trauma, to ensure that we are helping to people transition successfully. So I do hope that that will be a very important part of the actual services themselves. And then, I know you want to respond, I know about what you're pushing, but I want to just get it all out and then I'll be quiet.
Okay.
Then the other piece that I think just for Prosper Portland in general, you know, this process of leasing a portion of land for nothing with the expectation that we remain financially solvable, and I'm looking towards the mayor's office here, with all due respect. We don't want competing interests, we want complementary interest. And so, on the one hand, we want to be a part of this working solution and certainly see it as an honorable, thoughtful, if all these things that I've said are happening, it's thoughtful, right, driving force. But we also have to reconcile that, right, that we have to think about financial sustainability and then leasing a property for free that could be used for something that could potentially produce revenue for the agency. So I just, I want to throw out all those things to sort of, for us to think about and that at the end of the day, there should still be this consideration for both humanity and safety.
Thank you for your comments. I really do appreciate them. Just to address the mindfulness when it comes to programming, I have spent a little over 20 years in the mental health and addiction services arena, everywhere from, you know, a private hospital to working at Cat C, I don't know. So collaborative efforts, whether at different levels of care. I recently came from the Unity Center so that I saw a lot in the ED effectively. So a lot of the population that we served and saw on a regular basis was, you know, exactly the population that we'll be serving here, as well as other folks that are homeless or have houseless, yes, thank you. So I have a particular interest and a knowledge base in what a good program makes. So that's why the oversight, not to say that our operator doesn't have certain standards, but we will have our own standards in terms of quality of care. So I just wanted to kind of give you that assurance that we have experienced folks that are overseeing this. And I think the collaborative effort is truly amazing, everywhere from, you know, the residency program up at OHSU that has a great interest in helping us with students, 24-hour nursing, and all this is in kind. We've got, you know, on the case management piece, you know, I mean, I could just go through the list.
Yeah, I was going to say, well, right now.
I know. Well, that's a learning opportunity as well. So, and you know all about that. But in terms of the quality of care, that is right here. Okay, so, yes. Any?
Sure. So, as you know, the mayor's office is responsible for the quality of life for the entire city of Portland. And Prosper has been a really good partner for the mayor's office. So I don't want to throw out a bunch of cliches, but we're not going to throw good money after bad. We want to retain a good partnership with Prosper. With that being said, if it doesn't pencil, it doesn't pencil. We're not going to fit, you know, a square peg into a round hole. So what we're trying to do is make sure that everything is going to be feasible because we know that the entire city, possibly the country, is looking at this project. So we're going to make sure that it works before forcing it, if that makes you feel a little bit more comfortable, I hope.
The lease structure that we've contemplated here for our part and in my role as the chief asset officer here is to ensure that the property is well cared for, that whatever activities are taking place here, that it doesn't forestall or prevent future development that would be, you know, a positive development for the, permanent development for the community. So this is, so the lease structure will allow us to provide for adequate security of the perimeter while the Navigation Center is operating. It would also ensure that all of the regulatory requirements are met, either overseen by Prosper staff and paid for by the Oregon Harbor of Hope so that there would not be any cost, immediate cost consequences to us, and that the land is either made better by their presence from a value standpoint or at least not disturbed. And so that at the end of what is intended to be at the longest term, a five-year commitment by Prosper Portland of the land, that it would be returned to the development. As a development opportunity, it would be returned to the market and we would continue to pursue development opportunities there.
What's the estimated length of stay?
You know, we've analyzed other centers that are very similar with the same type of strong structure. There's one in San Diego and that we've met with their administrative group. And typically, we're looking at 60 days. It's going to be specific to each individual and that's going to be, of course, based on their treatment plan and what it looks like for the next step in the housing piece. So our hope is, obviously, to keep, get them off the streets and give them the tools they need to stay off the street, or whatever scenario.
Other questions?
I have questions. So there's no action item. Is this not going to require board approval to engage in the transaction?
Yeah, technically, it is within my signature authority. It's, lease is under five years where within my signature authority. But part of the reason that we wanted to have this discussion at the board level was, although technically it's within my authority, it is an unusual partnership. And so we wanted to make sure that if there were any things that you wanted to direct us as staff to engage, that we could have that conversation.
I'm just saying, you know, I've been attending the various meetings that have gone to negotiate and have been tracking the letter of intent as well, so.
Right. So not coming back, I mean, which is fine. I'm just, for you, more than anything, you guys have the certainty you're looking for as you're trying to...
Yeah.
We're not anticipating that it will be coming back to the board unless there is a significant change or, and/or unless there are things that you want us to come back to you to discuss.
So, and other than funding, what are your big hurdles?
I mean, I think, I think, you know, the costs associated with the land in terms of the whole remediation piece. And we've had multiple discussions, friendly discussions around the table regarding, you know, how to, you know, with civil engineers, remediation experts, what exactly is it going to take to make sure that the folks here on the property are safe and to get, in order to build, to put our structure on the land. And it's getting now up to, oh, we're a $600,000 range. And our budget was somewhere in the realm of, well, it's 100 and some. So the costs are starting to rise and we're looking at every avenue we can. So really, certain expectations in terms of design review and meeting those, you know, meeting those parameters to get approval to actually put the structure down. So those are our biggest hurdles, is, you know, we're improving the property, much of which those things will remain, and even the remediation piece. We thought it was temporary, but now we're just going to go ahead and do the, the cost differential, just, it makes sense to just go the full piece. So that will remain and exist when you go to develop, you know, the entire piece. So we're doing, you know, other things, sideways, side cut to the curb, things that are necessary for anyone that goes into developing the piece.
So one of the aspects of remediation, you know, there's sort of a temporary remediation that DEQ will allow for. And I think what Lisa is referring to is, you know, there's a more permanent solution as well. I think there's been creative outreach between the private team that is working at OHOH and our team with the governor's office on looking at the potential of working through some brownfield resources that could be brought to bear on this project. So, you know, that's something that we're coordinating as well and will be staying close to. If there's an opportunity to do site remediation that's permanent, obviously, we want to contribute to that or at least contribute support to that. But they're not asking for us to financially support the project at this time.
Yes, a few questions because, precisely because it may not come back in our direction again, so I want to make sure to cover some bases. First, very tough problem, no easy solution. I don't envy any of us. However, I do think in order to certainly appease some of my concerns, and I'm sure many others, it would be helpful to understand what the oversight structure looks like for this project, right? Who's involved? Who's on the board? How are you reporting, right? How are you keeping all the involved parties in the loop in such a way that we can provide input and resources as is appropriate? So that's one question. And then with respect to safety and security, it's a high transit area. So that's my biggest concern. Trains, buses, cars, the potential for things going sideways is there. So that's something I think I'd like to learn a little bit more about, how are you going to mitigate that risk? And then the good neighbor agreement, which is referenced in the document here, my family and I are property owners and business owners in the district. And so I'd just like to know more about what gets into that and, because I'll be seeing it, I'm sure, at some point if things go forward. So, three questions.
Just to put the answers in context in the lease agreement that we have, they are going to be required to provide a comprehensive security and management plan to us, which we will have the capability of reviewing with them. So, you know, whatever is satisfactory will have to come through us as well. And we're going to have to, you know, we have neighbors as well in this community. We have adjacent property and with Union Station, this parcel was actually acquired as part of the Union Station acquisition many years ago. And so we're going to want to ensure that those security measures are something that we have an opportunity to review before we're satisfied that the lease is in play. So I'll then turn it over to Lisa to talk about it.
Okay, let's see if I can remember everything.
The first issue was, well, there's security, but in the oversight structure.
Yeah, and I think I mentioned early on, we're just starting, TPI, we're meeting weekly now at the end of the month. It's our first meeting. And we've alluded to certain things that we are going to need, suggestions in terms of what we're looking for, but we haven't ironed those things out yet. Not to say we don't have plans in terms of, but we are going to ensure that staffing is well-trained. And when I talk about training, I mean, you know, all of the, with trauma-informed care, de-escalation, the whole nine yards, so that folks are, their staff is empowered.
What I mean by oversight is more much of what our function is, for example. What's the structure of governance for this particular project?
Yeah, and we have a board of directors.
Okay.
And...
Who is on the board of directors?
Dan Bissel, he was from, he's from part of, well, Northwest acute care. And he is on the board. Bill Russell, UGM, Don Homer, our two partners. And, I mean, I can provide the full list if that's helpful.
That would be great. Yeah, that would be helpful.
Maria Ruiz, who's Salvation Army, you know, I can give the full, present that to you.
Great, thank you.
But, so, of course, we meet and report to them on a regular basis. And they are very involved in the process.
And then with respect to the good neighbor agreement, do you have any basic elements for that?
Yeah, and I was going to speak to that a little bit if we had any questions on the community effort. The good neighbor agreement, you know, we've had, I think, three task force meetings now, which is a great collaboration. I know Burke has participated in many of them. It's a collaboration between Old Town Neighborhood Association, Pearl, and several folks, interested, you know, citizens. And this is, the good neighbor agreement is an extension, a subcommittee, into which we're meeting and putting together the language. And we're in process for that. We're setting up, so we're really in the initial stages. So Stan is spearheading that. He's with the Pearl. He's heading up the Pearl, for those that aren't aware.
Pearl District Neighborhood Association.
Yeah, yeah, Pearl, sorry. So that is, like I said, in process and we haven't met yet. But we've done breakaway groups at the task force. So, and Helen Yang is a part of that. We've done a lot of work in those task force meetings. So...
As an extension, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I also wanted to add, so in these task force meetings, we have people with lived experience, we have property owners, we have business owners, we have Portland Police Bureau, mayor's office representative, we've got joint Office of Homeless Services, Mark Jolins there. So we're getting as much perspective as we can before we make any final decisions on how we're going to move forward because we're trying to gather as much information to help with the structure and all.
And we are having August 13th, and I invite any of you that want to participate, yet another, sort of a, more of a community outreach meeting. And this is, yet again, one more opportunity to talk about where we're at, another collaborative effort. We've had five, actually, it's more, at least five, community meetings in the Pearl. And we had over 200 folks attend. And it was, I think, 19 property owners represented condo associations, apartments, and 16 businesses in the area. So, and we were really, I mean, of course, we had folks that were concerned in security, same themes that we discussed here. But out of all of the attendees, we had probably 40-some folks that wanted to give time, to give their time. So we were really pleased. Folks that weren't initially very excited about it, I think, once they heard our plan in terms of security and looking at the big-picture oversight from our perspective, I think they were feeling a little more comfortable. So...
My only suggestion would be to continue that outreach because...
Oh, for sure.
Business owners like ourselves, you know, we all, I think, are compassionate individuals and we want to contribute in whatever way we can to help solve this problem, right, in a way that is ultimately very humane. So I think the more you can do on that and engage with the business community, I think is going to be very helpful.
Yes. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. This has been a very useful update. We wish you the best, of course. And we're excited about this project. Would it be possible, maybe, to come back again later on in the fall, maybe for another update? I don't know exactly when.
And we'll have more to talk about, for sure.
Yeah, that'd be great. It'd also be great to hear a little bit more about fundraising. You know, the Boils, of course, have been incredibly generous and are tremendous people. But hopefully, it'd be nice for the board, I think, to hear how that's going to and to what extent other...
Yes. And we're currently driving to, we have a luncheon with several business owners in town for next Monday.
Great.
Operating of the facility. So we're pushing ahead. Not easy, trust me, but we're pushing ahead. So we will, we'd be happy to.
Super. Thank you so much. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, with that, this meeting of the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners is now adjourned.
Well, with that, this meeting of the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners is now adjourned.